Twenty twenty city council meeting to order, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have Pastor Darrell Peterson here to do the prayer. Thank you Darrell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can we pray? Dear heaven and most gracious father, we just thank you and praise you and give you glory and honor. We thank you father god as we just got done making a pledge to our allegiance to the United States. Father, we thank you for that privilege and we thank you father for the privilege as council members and leaders. That father, we make a pledge to the best of the community in whatever sort of frame. We thank you lord god as I've been a pastor for over thirty years and I thank you father that I have taken a pledge. My pledge is to serve my master and my college and father, I thank you for that, that to be obedient, to be willing and to accomplish what needs to be done. And I thank you father as we lift up the council meeting this morning that father, the agenda is the best for the community. Whatever needs to be done, father, we thank you adjustments can be made. Thank you lord god that people will not do what they shouldn't do, but father, they should come together and work out a deal, make a plan and accomplish what needs to be done. And father, we just thank you for everything that you have accomplished, but greater things you're getting ready to do in Jesus's name, amen.
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 Next item please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the time of the meeting where we allow people in the audience to address the council. With items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you state your name and address. And please limit your remarks to five minutes. We do now have a handy dandy timer, so thank you for that.
I think I can do that. I think I can do that. I'll just introduce myself. My name is Alicia Garcia. And I have been a resident of Hutchinson for about four years now. Moved here from St. Louis, Kansas, where I grew up. I have to say that the biggest issue I've had living here is just, I'm a single mother with three children. And so when I invest my money in, into renting a property from somebody after I have looked and looked and looked and I found something that I'm in love with, I work hard, multiple jobs even if I have to, in order to make sure that things are paid for because I'm an honest person. But because of that, I also tend to let things slide that I shouldn't let slide. And this past, this past year was the hardest year of my life. And because the property that I was living in was horribly under kept up. It was in a beautiful neighborhood. It was in a safe neighborhood. I absolutely love my neighbors that I just had to leave. I cried when I realized that there was just, I could not fight no longer for this property. The hardest thing for me at that time when I had first moved in was just, I could not even live there for that first week. I, I could, it was just so dirty and so not taken care of that I could not move in after the person had moved out. Then they refunded me back that week's rent thankfully, but I had issues with broken windows and all kinds of stuff. A slew of things I can't go into right now. But I had like over a month trying to get ahold of somebody at the city to try to come in and inspect the property. I had to get ahold of the city manager, John, thank you for taking my call. And he was luckily able to get ahold of somebody pretty quickly and they got out there probably within a week or so from that call. I took pictures, documentation and kept track of every single communication I had with my landlord. Unfortunately, I had to call the city out another time because unfortunately, not everything got taken care of. But they just went over there and, and took documentation of everything and pictures of everything left that still needs to be fixed. Because I just wanted to make sure that it didn't happen to somebody else. The utility bills were so outrageous that they pretty much, my rent was six ninety-five and they were about a hundred dollars shy in the summer and at the peak of the winter time that I was living in the property. So it made it really, really hard for me as, as a mom to try to provide for my kids. So I did have to get lots and lots of help and I'm very, very thankful for all of the help organizations here in town that are blessing the community with their help and their support. But my concern is just that I understand that city, city code enforcement, I have to thank for finally coming out. I just would like to see a little bit quicker response. It seems like ever since you guys have gotten a human relations department finally, it's going a little bit quicker for me. But I would just like to see people take a little bit better care of their properties. Especially like while I was in with a management company that has hundreds and hundreds of properties, you would think that they would have, you know, funds allocated and puts to the side for things like that so they can get on top of things and fix them pretty quickly. And so the expectations are pretty high when you're, when you're dealing with, with a business that is held at a pretty high standard, you know, so I appreciate you all hearing me out. And I'm trying to keep it under five minutes. If you guys have any questions, I would love to answer them.
Thank you so much for taking the time to share your story.
Thank you. Thank you so much everyone for hearing me out today.
DeJada, human relations officer for the city of Hutchinson, I just wanted to quickly reiterate, Ms. Garcia's story is not the only story that I've heard in the last probably month. People have come and shared that when the repairs are not being done by landlords, they are really struggling with those utility bills which continue to put them back behind on their rent. Then landlords are able to use the fact that they haven't paid their rent on time to create eviction processes and thus move those tenants out of their homes. So when I hear Ms. Garcia's story, I'm kind of touched and poked a little bit because this is not the only story that we're receiving. And I understand that, you know, with the, with the rental registration program and the code enforcement, and code enforcement program, there are some things that we could do a little bit better. But when we hear these things and we know that landlords aren't being as responsive as they should be, I feel that some of these tenants really don't have any options and any other ways to go. So as the human relations commission has tasked me to do is to ask these questions and to inquire what steps we can take to find some type of protection for tenants like Ms. Garcia and those who are struggling just to create a safe space for their families. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing and this kind of is a gray area because I know this is an agenda item, kind of. I don't know if, if these comments are necessarily in favor of keeping our, our current rental registration program. But I do invite anybody else who has comments to come up, but let's try to keep them to, if, if there's an agenda item that will cover this, I do ask you to reserve your comments until then.
I don't know if there's an agenda item that covers this.
Okay, great. Go ahead, please state your name and address.
My name is Jonah Blake. I actually live just down the road at five hundred east avenue C. I've lived in Hutchinson for about four years now. I moved here after I graduated high school in Haven. And in the last month, I've had some significant troubles. I left for Cleveland, Ohio for job training for my place of work. I work at Crepper's Corner. And while I was in Cleveland, Ohio, I received a call from a friend who was watching my house for me that my truck was no longer in my driveway. Upon seeking out further information on it, my truck had been towed from my driveway for not having an up-to-date tag. Overviewing the city code, my truck was exempt from that as an antique, being over thirty-five years old. And I did not receive this notification that my truck was in violation of anything prior to my leaving for my training. In addition, I, I did get my truck back, but I had to pay seventy-five dollars to get it back from the private contractor that was holding it in their own personal impound lot. Which I don't make a lot of money. That's significantly impacting my ability to stay warm in my own house in the winter, to upkeep it, to pay my mortgage. In addition, I was also cited for violations for paint on my garage, siding on my garage, windows on my garage. But when I received my truck back and had it towed back, I was told that when I came back from Cleveland, Ohio, that I would need to come in on that Monday and make an appointment to meet with the city inspector at my house to overview these violations I have. I left for work Monday morning so I could get my work vehicle and then come make these arrangements. While I was on my way back into town, I received a call from my coworker who had been responsible for watching my house as well and had helped contact the city for me while I was thousand, a thousand miles away from home. To say that the city inspector, John Better, had called her and told her that nothing had changed on my property and that I was, I can't remember the wording for it, but that I was looking at court and jail time and fines. When I had only got back the night before, I'd had no time to make any of these changes. And I was told that I wouldn't be given an appointment to discuss what needed to be changed. On January twenty-eighth, I finally received a call from John Better overviewing what violations I had on my property. I was told that my truck still no longer had a tag still subjecting it to tow. But I had already previously been told that that was wrong. I was also told not to attempt to contact his boss, by him, Trent Maxwell. I was told not to contact Trent Maxwell because he could do nothing for me. What's the point of having all these positions available to the public if I'm not supposed to contact them? Living in this town, it's, it's been alright. It's been rough. And that's mainly just because I've struggled to get things going, but I take steps and I continue to try to improve my own life. But at the same time, it's kind of hard to do that in a town where I have to spend hundreds of dollars within an extremely limited timeframe that I don't have. That I don't have yet, that I'm working towards. And I do understand I have been able to contact Trent Maxwell and work out a better plan and start working towards these things, but still, to be told that I couldn't contact somebody to help me, it just does not make this town feel like a very welcoming place to live in. Very stressful.
Well, thank you for sharing that experience and, you know, I'm sorry that that was your experience. And I think we've heard some indications over the last few weeks that we need to take a different approach when it comes to working with people on their properties. And I'm confident that we can come up with a solution that's a, maybe a little more friendlier, a little friendlier. And, you know, I will say that staff is simply carrying out the rules that council put before them. So definitely the responsibility is ours that you weren't treated the way that you should have been.
I don't think the council ever specified, "Don't contact my boss."
That's, that's true.
I would just say that I'd be happy to look into your, there's probably a whole nother side to the story that we need to hear. And I'd be happy to work with you through any of these issues going forward.
Yeah, if you could work with John or Paul, our city attorney, I'm sure we'll be able to come up with a solution. And then just know long-term for the community's sake. The housing commission and a subcommittee are, are working on a different way to handle the process. We hear loud and clear that maybe the process isn't what's best for our community right now and what's best for people who are struggling to invest in their properties. And we're committed to finding a solution that's kinder. And I'm really sorry that you had that experience, but thank you for taking the time to come share with us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
I do, this is cutting into my time at work. Is there anything preventing you from going ahead and heading into work?
Oh, no, you have to hang out.
Excuse me sir, can you stop just a second? I appreciate you coming and speaking out. I know it takes a lot of courage and Lisa, I thank you for coming to speak up. I have a lot of people that don't want to speak up and it took a lot of courage. And I really appreciate you coming up and coming forth, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Pardon me. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council? Please Mitch.
Now, I don't know if this is for later or now.
If it's rental registration, rental, we've got that on the agenda later.
Pardon? It's just more about harassment. So I don't know if it's later or not.
I think it's part of the rental registration, but that's just my opinion.
Do we have a time for speaking later?
We do.
When the item comes up, yeah.
Do you mind reserving your comments Mitch? Okay, thank you so much. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on items who, that aren't on the agenda? For items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Next item please.
Item five, consent agenda.
Mayor, I just have one question. I certainly have no problems with the issue itself, but five B, the approval of contract with Hutchinson Friends of the Zoo for operation of a narrow gauge train. I guess my question is, is it for you Paul, is this a new arrangement in terms of, or is this a continuation?
Yes, it's a continuation.
It is a continuation. So the, the track itself has been conveyed to the city of Hutchinson rather than the Friends of the Zoo?
They provide the staff to drive the train.
Okay, so this is just an extension of, okay, I wasn't familiar with.
I think as long as the train's ever been there.
Okay, fine.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the agenda, on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item please.
Item sixteen, we're hearing to consider issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for affordable housing, Commerce Gardens.
Great.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I would move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Commerce Gardens is asking the city council to consider a resolution determining advisability of issuing taxable IRBs. This resolution is for an amount not to exceed six point six million. The funds will be used to finance developing an additional forty-eight units at the Commerce Gardens apartment complex. The city council will need to open the public hearing, conduct that, and then approve the resolution determining the advisability. In your packet, you have the cost benefit analysis provided by WSU. This meets the requirements to pass the IRB. The impact of this, as a reminder, the city has no obligation to pay these bonds. We will incur no costs for this. The Commerce Gardens is liable for all costs of the issuance. In addition, Commerce Gardens is applying for a property tax exemption with the Kansas Board of Tax Appeals for ten years. In lieu of paying taxes, they have a pilot agreement that they have proposed to pay four hundred dollars per unit for ten years. With us here is Dominic from Gilmore and Bell and Mr. Gordon, the applicant. They can answer any questions you may have regarding this. After your questions, we request that you make a motion, after you close the public hearing, that you make a motion to approve the resolution and approve signing the pilot agreement if you so desire.
Okay, is there any questions?
Questions from the council?
Would you like to address the council?
Yeah.
Come on up. Don't be shy.
Talk about it.
Welcome.
Dominic Ack with Gilmore and Bell, bond counsel to Commerce Gardens. Thank you to Angela and City Manager Deirdre for having us out today. We are here, as Angela so well put it, to ask for phase two of the Commerce Gardens apartment project. Again, as Angela put, this will require no liability of the city and all costs will be paid by Commerce Gardens related to this bond issuance. This bond issuance will help reduce the property tax bill and provide a sales tax exemption to make the second phase of this project feasible to provide additional quality and affordable housing units to the city of Hutchinson residents. So if you have any questions on the process or the project, we do have Rort Gordon with the, with the company here with us as well and we can be happy to answer anything.
Angela, I've got a que, I'm sorry I didn't ask this, but are we open just, this is giving you a permission to have a hearing on this? Am I right? Is that I hear you right?
This is the public hearing.
Oh, this is the hearing.
After you close it, you would then approve the resolution, if you approve of this project, and also approve of the signing of the pilot agreement. The next part of this, well, what this does is it allows them to issue the bond. So it's the first part of the process. After this, they will issue the bonds, close on the bonds. We then do a lease agreement with them. That's part of the process. So in essence, they're leasing the property from us. It's just a formality. So those are the, the next steps.
Okay. Well, I would say that I am certainly pleased to, to see this next phase of, of the Commerce Gardens project being presented to us this morning. I think it's an incredible project and the investment resource group that I know a little bit of the history of this in terms of the transformation of Commerce Gardens. From what it was perhaps eight to ten years ago to what it is today is just incredible. The turnaround of the, the whole hundred and ten new units plus these forty-eight additional units, I think is a real compliment to a, a fine professional property management group. And so I'm certainly supportive of the project here. I guess my question would be either this morning or perhaps at some point to discuss how we have arrived at the payment lieu of tax schedule of four hundred dollars per unit. I have no issue with the pilot. It's whether or not the, it's equitable for the city to arrive at this four hundred dollars per unit. It'd be interesting to know what the full tax liability would be and what that gap might be just so we have a comfort level here at the city in terms of the, the pilot arrangement.
Sure. My name's Rort Gordon. I'm general counsel for IRC Investment Resources Corporation. And the way that we came up with that four hundred dollar figure is that is what we're using currently on the pilot for phase one. Right now, the additional four acres, obviously there's no development on there. And so there's no property taxes that are, minimal property taxes that are being paid. This area is within the neighborhood revitalization zone. And so it is, it's able to obtain the discount in property taxes for a ten-year period anyways. What we do with the pilot is provide certainty to HUD and our investors that it will, property taxes will remain the same. Whereas they fluctuate over the neighborhood revitalization, they don't under the pilot program. And we need that to obtain some level of confidence with our investment group. But we, we use that four hundred dollar figure to mimic what the city would be getting under the neighborhood revitalization anyways. So it shouldn't come as a big negative or impact to the city. And that's how we came up with that dollar.
That's how you arrived at the, at the pilot number.
For me, one of my concerns with this is is when you get these large complexes for low-income housing, it actually takes away from a city's ability to re, to get their older neighborhoods and their low-income neighborhoods to revitalize because you're almost consolidating all of that. almost consolidating all of that into new development and new areas. And I know that if we were to invest in a city long-term of what we want to do with the city, it almost inhibits our ability to want to revitalize our other neighborhoods. It could increase the impact of houses that are dilapidating, it could increase the impact on what we ended bulldozing down, because there's little or no investment that are going to be going into these low-income housing. So there is a little bit of an impact on the city's long-term viability for some, for reinvestment. And I would like to see for the city is low-income residential houses, because HUD and all that has good standards. So you can take a house and you can, and in these neighborhoods, and get them up to speed and also provide low-income housing. So my only concern with this is the fact of the, one, you could probably, you want, you're getting your investment, are you privately owned LLC? So you're getting a benefit from the city issuing this bond, basically, to make it to your operating is feasible in order to do the plan. But like I said, the long-term vision for the city, I would hope, is to bring back these other neighborhoods and not consolidate our low-income housing into new developments. So for that reason, I am not in support of this.
If I could just address one comment with respect to that. One of the things that we're doing with this project is bringing in additional subsidy from an apartment complex that's in western Kansas. So we were able to go out and negotiate a Section Eight contract that was on a property in a different neighborhood, a different area of the state. And so we've worked with HUD to have that subsidy transferred to the city of Hutchinson. So if this project didn't occur, that subsidy wouldn't be coming into your community. You wouldn't be giving additional affordable housing in individual homes, it just wouldn't be subsidy that your, your citizens would have access to.
Yeah, well, I really want to encourage a growth in the middle class. And people, and if we're going to get more jobs here, we're going to need people that are going, we're going to need housing for our middle class to get the people in here so we can get the jobs in here, because right now we're really struggling to fill what little jobs that we have. And I know for a fact, from when I've, I have worked, is you don't qualify for these housings if you work an $11 an hour job or a $16 an hour job. I think as a city, we need to make some hard choices that might not be really hard choices when we think about our long-term and our increasing our workforce and how our housing directly is involved in increasing our workforce.
Angela, I had a question on the limitations of IRBs as a financing tool and, and some of the things that Sarah is suggesting. So IRBs, when it, that's not a, that's not a tool that could be used residentially, right? I mean, for individual?
No, traditionally, I'm sorry. Traditionally, IRBs are used for bringing in infrastructure, bringing in more jobs. This only creates two long-term employments for the city. Traditionally, IRBs were used to bring in factories, infrastructure, to improve the city on a return in investment. This has a very low return in investment for the city, it has a very low impact on the amount of jobs that it's creating. And that's not the intention that the IRBs was originally used for. It is used to bring in factories, it's used to bring in good jobs to a community.
I think we've used them for-
And we're only talking about two here.
I do believe we've used them for nearly all of the nursing homes in town.
We've used for multiple, not just industry.
I have no problem with the, with the nursing homes or getting those low-income senior homes in, which is going to be on the agenda next, I'm in fully support of that. We do have an aging population that needs to be addressed. But at the same time, we also need to consider our neighborhoods, what our long-term strategy is with them and what inhibits the revitalization of our neighborhoods, and that's consolidation of low-income houses.
Do you mind going over the cost-benefit ratio that the WSU study for the community briefly?
Yeah, are there specific questions on the study?
Can you explain how that works and being above that 1.0 line?
Sure. What WSU does is they take all of the factors as far as the cost of the project, the impact with, with jobs that will be created by the project, they plug that all into their financial modeling. They also have in there the amount of taxes that would be abated, both from a property tax perspective and a sales tax perspective. They take into account the amount of the pilot agreement that is proposed to be entered into, and they run that through and come out with this cost-benefit analysis, which gives an idea of whether there is a positive or negative return on investment from the city's perspective, the county's perspective, the state's perspective, and make sure that, you know, that is presented to the governing body. There are no state requirements for what you have to hit there. The city or county, an issuer, is free to use this cost-benefit analysis to inform their decision, but it is not required to hit any certain marks in order for a project to be eligible for an IRB. I would point out for this project that there are maybe two things that the cost-benefit analysis doesn't perfectly take into account. Number one, the impact to the quality housing stock to the city of Hutchinson. That is not a financial measure that can be put into this model. The Phase One of the Commerce Gardens has been very successful and there's quite a waiting list to get in there, it's a desirable property. That can't be taken into this cost-benefit analysis, because you can't put that into numbers. Number two, what this does not include, this includes a full tax abatement, saying the city's investment, if you will, is the full tax abatement. As Mr. Gordon mentioned earlier, this property also is in the neighborhood revitalization program. So without the IRB, then there could be an application under the neighborhood revitalization program, which would also eliminate most of these taxes. That would just increase the cost-benefit ratio to the city. It's already showing above a one-to-one benefit to the city. That would further increase it, knowing that there's that alternative program that could be utilized here.
And I had one other question about HUD housing rules. If somebody is accepted into HUD housing and then improves their financial situation through education or a higher-paying job, are they allowed to stay in that housing?
Low-income based.
It's all, yeah.
It depends, but over a transitional period, they are permitted. Now, once they reach a certain-
Threshold.
Threshold, then they become ineligible for that. But as Mr. Ack did point out, one of the things I'd like to highlight is, when we did Phase One, we came back to the city, this, this council, a number of the same members were here, and they said, you've got four acres adjacent to this project, we're really pleased with how this went, when can you come back and do Phase Two?
Yeah.
We're here. And Phase One has been successful, but there's an absolute need for affordable housing in this community. And that's, that's really evident with the 300-person waiting lists that we have currently on Phase One.
Wow.
If I could go back just for a moment to give just a brief history of Commerce Gardens. The project was built back in the early 70s when there was a dire need in the community to provide workforce housing. And at that time, the community stepped forward and built the project and served for almost 40 years at the need to fill this, this gap and this void in terms of workforce housing. And then in 2013 came along, and we had torrential rains that the complex was essentially flooded and people were asked to relocate because of the high water levels. And it was in a terrible, terrible condition as to whether or not it, it could even continue to operate and to provide these housing units for these, for these families. And along comes the, the group that had managed the property and an arrangement was worked out to where they actually acquired the Commerce Gardens in its existing condition with the understanding that they were willing to invest, along with agreement from HUD, to rebuild the entire complex. And they have done so. And it's a, it's an incredible project that has improved the housing stock and the condition of the housing. And now comes the next phase. So I, I think over time, Commerce Gardens has met the needs of the community in providing good, quality, improved workforce housing. So obviously, I'm supporting and an advocate of approving this motion today. Whether or not the pilot is an equitable number, I'm okay with it, but I want to make sure that there's a fairness and an equity in terms of how we've arrived at, at the value for the payment lieu of taxes.
No doubt, it creates additional tax revenue for the city. Without the IRBs and the pilot, the project is not sustainable. I mean, it's not, it doesn't work. So it, it takes care of that gap in financing that we need, but then also it creates additional tax revenue for the city, because without it, the property is unimproved.
It'd be vacant land, yeah.
It would be vacant.
Yeah. Okay. And I would just comment, I do think it's important to note that the neighborhood revitalization program is there by right. And so, and I apologize, I didn't calculate that out, but, you know, they would be subject to tax rebates regardless of what happened here today over the next 10 years.
So would they be able to secure financing on their own then, because those tax abatements are already privileged to them?
I think so, but there's other benefits as to why they're doing the IRBs. But question about demand?
Yes.
What's the demand out there?
Right now, there's a 300-person waiting list on Commerce Garden Phase One, so.
Says something.
So that's $400 a year times-
Per unit.
Per unit.
Nineteen thousand, two hundred. So that's about nineteen thousand, two hundred. It's an additional, almost $20,000 in taxes that we don't have now.
That's correct. And again, it's, it's going to create additional federal subsidy for the residents of Hutchinson that doesn't otherwise exist. It's only recently, under the HUD's new programs, that they allow you to transfer subsidy within a state. And so we are, they don't create additional subsidy anymore. There's no section, new Section Eight contracts that are creating additional federal subsidy. So we're bringing in subsidy from a western Kansas market on an apartment complex that didn't need it, because the market rents reflected what they were getting there. And so we're utilizing subsidy that the residents of this community wouldn't otherwise get.
I know after the, the Duster Revolution, when the third, when the middle class was basically born, they had a lot of low-income housing in a lot of these big cities, and what happened was everybody went back to work. And that's how you end up with these large communities, like in, in Boston and, and other places, that just became really the, really bad, dangerous neighborhoods, because once everybody gets back to work, they no longer need that much. So I would hope, I'm just concerned about the long-term viability of increasing, we also have another low-income housing thing coming up, too. And I just would think, do we, I understand we have a 300 waiting list, but what these people really need is jobs, not more low-income housing that to highly saturate our city with, because that's not going to encourage these people to go to work. I worked at Arby's, and I had a friend that worked in low-income housing. She only worked part-time. We would ask her, will you catch, will you work another shift? And she says, no, because if I work more, I don't get as much, I don't have to pay $24 now for my rent. So no, I'm not going to work more. I'm going to work where I'm at, because I get this much in, in benefits, and I don't want to lose my benefits. I don't want to work more, because my net gain is zero. And that's what we have to consider here. Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing, are there any other comments from the council or the audience?
Yes, I'm Richard Greaver, 3409 North Maple. I'm not against affordable housing. I'm against more subsidized housing, and I'm dead set against tax abatement. I pay $50,000 a year in taxes in this town on my properties. I try to make a profit, it's kind of hard to do sometimes, but I'm against this tax abatement, and I'm definitely against subsidized housing.
Are there other comments? Any further discussion from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Is there a motion on this item?
Yes, I would move to approve resolution of the governing body of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an affordable housing apartment complex facility to be located in said city, authorizing the mayor to sign the resolution and all related documents, including the agreement for payment lieu of taxes.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
No.
Garza?
This is a very, very hard decision. I, I understand what Ms. Bagwell is saying. I was going in my head, learn all about this stuff, I understand what Mr. Greaver's saying, subsidized housing. But what got my ears is the $20,000 that we earned on the tax stuff of it. Very, very hard decision for me. I don't know, it's very hard. At this time, I'm going to say no.
Kyra St. Carvalho?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7A, Consider Letter and Resolution of Support for the Interfaith Townhomes One
Good morning, sorry, I believe IT is pulling up the presentation now. For the record, my name is Ryan Veal, look Director of Planning and Development with the city of Hutchinson. Before you, this morning, is two requests from Interfaith Townhomes and from Manskin Associates. Before we get into it, I want to kind of separate what is different about this request versus the previous request. This request is a, a letter and a resolution of support for an application that Manskin Associates and Interfaith Housing is putting together for Kansas housing, for low-income housing tax credit. So this is, is different than, than what was previous. This is basically, what we are asking is for the council to look at this proposed project and see, does it meet housing needs within our community? It will be up to the state of Kansas through a competitive application process to determine the viability of this project, and they look at a lot of different things. So this is a little bit different than, than the previous one, but wanted to take this opportunity to kind of explain that. So before you, this morning, are, are two potential projects from Interfaith Housing. The first one is, I'm calling it kind of a split project, an 18-unit affordable town home development for general, general occupancy at 500 West 20th Avenue, that's the former St. Elizabeth site, and an age-restricted 12-unit town home development at Jewel Street and East 34th. So that is the property that is just to the north and west of the Dylan's Market Place. So these are, would be both general occupancy and age-restricted, as I said, we're looking at 40 to 80% AMI area of medium income here. So the first slide you see here is the proposed development plan for the property at St. Elizabeth. So this is the 18 units. As you can see, they would be two-story units for the general, general occupancy. And then here is the, the floor plan, it's a little difficult to see, but basically what you would have on the first floor would be the garage, a kitchen area, living area, and then on the second floor would be your bathrooms, your bedrooms, your living space. So this, the site at Jewel is the 12 units, age-restricted, so these are going to be single level. Uh- level duplexes. So you can see here, you'd have a garage, a shared one, two-car garage basically with a, with a party wall there, two bedrooms, all single level, which is reflective of the age-restricted. So here's just some pictures that Interfaith has supplied, Mansky and Associates have supplied a very similar project that they've done elsewhere in the state. So the top one would be similar to what you would see at the St. Elizabeth site. So you see the two-story, you've got your garage, and then your, your bottom one would be what you would see at the Dylan's site, which is a, a single level, single-car garage. So that's all I have on that. We have representatives from Interfaith and Mansky and Associates who can answer any other questions about the logistics of the project.
Hi, good morning, council.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me. My name is Clint Nelson. I'm the Director of Housing Development for Interfaith Housing and Community Services, and I'd like to speak briefly, just follow up what Ryan said, on these proposed projects. So Interfaith Townhomes 1, Ryan mentioned it is the 500 West 20th, the former St. Elizabeth Hospital. Some of you may remember, we came last year requesting a resolution for our tax credit application at that time, which was to retrofit that building with new apartments. We did submit that application last year, and unfortunately, I can tell you, we were denied funding from the state. And in addition to the, the lack of funding from the state, we were also informed that the sheer size of that building, the scope of that project, it just wasn't going to be a feasible project for the state to, to support. At that point, we started working with our partner, Jay Mansky is here in the audience today, joining me, and we started working on a Plan B. And we started looking at that building through a slightly different set of lenses in the fact that, that building continues to deteriorate, that building is located north of a target or a, you know, an opportunity zone. So we, we definitely took note that that, that building sits right in the middle of a fairly dense residential neighborhood. Driving by, if you drive by and look at the old hospital building, it may just look like we've been putting boards up on windows for the last three years, but in fact, the, the interior of that building continues to deteriorate at a very fast pace. The, the health and safety issues in that building are significant at this point. The commitment, the time that HPD has had to put into securing that building and preventing vandalism and theft, trying to keep kids from getting hurt in that building, that, that's real right now, and it's something that we're fighting on a regular basis. So based on those facts, we did come to the conclusion that the best decision for Interfaith and for that neighborhood would be to raise that building and to redevelop that site with new construction. The upper picture, the three-bedroom, two-bath Townhomes, that's a 32-unit project that we just completed in Dodge City. They're very efficient properties, very attractive. We think they would fit well on that site. In addition, we have the 3.2 acres of land that we own just to the north and west of Dylan's Marketplace. Interfaith has owned that property for about 20 years. A portion of that property sits in the floodplain, the FEMA floodplain. We have imported dirt and graded that off to allow that to be developed at this point. We at Interfaith see an increasing need for affordable senior housing. We currently have about 90 rental properties in Hutchinson, and a lot of those are targeted to senior and disabled. We are 100% occupied, and we have approximately 40 people on our waiting list right now. So we definitely know that there's a need there. That is Interfaith Townhomes 1. That's our first application. We have elected to submit a second application for this round of low-income housing tax credits. Our second application will be the Manor Drive site as a standalone project. That's 24 units of senior housing. We do, in, in conversations with our developer, Mansky and Associates, we, we do feel like that second application for the senior properties will in fact score better in the eyes of the state, and may very well, if they do choose to fund one of our projects, this senior project may be the one that they in fact select. Barring the fact that we did have a conversation with them last year, and they realized the negative impact that the former hospital is having on that neighborhood right now. So we're, we're kind of rolling the dice, or we're putting two applications in, and in hopes of getting funded by the state on at least one of those. As you guys know from your last council meeting, there are two other low-income housing tax credits also being submitted this round. We feel like both projects would be a bit of a stimulus for the area. They're both in residential neighborhoods. We see a need for affordable housing. Sir, I was, I was paying close attention to your comments on the, the commerce presentation and...
Yes, I, these are all for disability and, and senior housing?
This second, yes.
The first or the second or both?
So the, the first application includes Phase 1 of the senior project?
Yes, because I think that's very commemorative. I mean, our seniors are people who deserve to have affordable housing. Out of every demographic that I believe that subsidized or affordable housing should be giving to is our seniors. And I do believe that this, that people with disability and seniors should be getting this as a benefit. They have worked their entire lives. They're a generation that worked hard. And I absolutely, and I think the houses are beautiful, and I think it would be a great asset to the community.
Thank you. We feel the same. The zero-entry design of these senior properties will allow individuals, and it's senior meaning 55 and over is the, the initial qualifying age. We feel the design will allow seniors to...
Stay in their homes longer?
Stay in their homes, stay age-in-place. I know that's, that's trending right now, but we, we definitely feel like that, this is the style of property to do that. It is in kind of a, even though Marketplace, Dylan's Marketplace is right there, there's a buffer. It is kind of a quiet setting. In fact, we, we have a, a potential vision, we need to talk more at the city, but there is some wetlands, some woodland there, and there's a bike and hike trail just to the south of this property, so maybe we can make a connector for that whole subdivision at some point. So yeah, the, either partial first application, we've got senior units going up, or the second application, we would develop this entire project as one phase. I did want to speak just a little bit to the subsidy for our tenants at Interfaith. For our tenants to receive a subsidy for their housing, they actually have to apply with the housing authority, and they have to, many of you know, they have to receive the voucher. I believe there's a year-plus wait for that right now. And so many of our tenants that apply or applicants, they simply just don't have enough monthly gross income to afford the housing expense, the rent and utilities. The targeting for this senior project in particular actually drops all the way down to 30% area median income. That means a one-person senior household that makes $12,930 a year or less would qualify to get into a selection of these units. Their rent would only be $235. Now that's, that's meeting a significant need. We have seniors that apply all the time that make less than $800 a month. That's their entire income. This allows them to be housed without a voucher right away. On the, the opposite side of that spectrum, there's also a selection of these houses that qualify, 80% AMI. So that household, the senior, could make $34,480 or less per year. So we really picked up a large swath of the senior population that could be housed here. So yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about it, and we're requesting a, a favorable letter resolution in support of both projects this morning.
Clint, can I ask a question about the Townhomes 1 development? If that were unfortunately not to be funded, would you still have plans to raise that building?
Do you know any buyers? I, I mean, I hate to joke, but I mean, honestly, you go through that building, and it was redeveloped back in the 80s, the first and second floor. I think there was commercial in there when we took the building, on, on donation, by the way. I'm not sure what voice I was listening to when we did that, but you know, there was, there was four occupants in the building. There was a gentleman with his son, single dad, that had lived there for seven years, and he loved living there. I mean, that was, he was proud of living in the building. It wasn't feasible for us to heat the whole building and keep people in there. If you get up to the third and fourth floor, there's been individuals or, or teams that went in there and actually cut out walls, and they had floor plans in mind, and they had, they envisioned a project, but realized that they, they couldn't fund it, and so it was abandoned. And, and what I, my take is that, that's happened two or three times in that building, where someone's tried to develop it. At this point, I, there was two failed auctions. I mean, we attempted to fund it, you know, through the state, and that was a failure. I, I don't know what sort of impact, long-term, that's going to continue to have on that area, because there's some really nice housing around there. There's some great rental property just to the north. There's a lot of residential around Wiley, it's pretty dense. Driving by that building, it's, it's not looking any better.
Yeah, and my interest wasn't necessarily from the historical preservation standpoint, but more of a neighborhood stabilization standpoint.
Absolutely.
Because I'm sure it's probably quite a target for squatters or crime.
I circled around your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if we're not funded, we're, we're continuing to, to solicit demolition bids, and we would likely, barring somebody that comes to us and says, hey, I've got a plan, I've got interest in the building, you know, we would have that conversation. But otherwise, we'll, we'll need to look at removing the building and scraping it. Hopefully, we can ultimately see a few units of housing built there. If not, maybe it could be green space or, or something else that would benefit the area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? If not, is there a motion on this item?
I will move to accept the recommendation of the Housing Commission to provide a letter and resolution of support for the Interfaith Townhomes 1 Development, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hi, Rose DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7B, consider letter and resolution of support for the Interfaith Townhomes 2 Development.
So just for reference, once again, this is the standalone site at 34th and Jewel, the 24-unit, zero-entry, senior, age-restricted. I did want to speak real quick, a little bit more about the importance of, of getting some, some good high-quality, age-restricted units in the city. The Housing Commission, for about the last six months, six to nine months, has convened an Aging in Place Subcommittee. And we have been working with lending institutions, we've been working with the Department of Aging, we've been working with real estate agents, really to kind of look at this whole aging in place issue, and, and that, you know, our population is continuing to age. We have kind of what I would call sort of a logjam in our, our housing cycle. So typically, in a, in a, in a community that has a strong housing market, you have your entry level, first-time home buyers, and then people eventually kind of move on, move up in homes as they get larger families and things like that, and then eventually kind of begin to downsize as children move on. That's not really happening in Hutchinson. What is happening is, is we kind of have that logjam of people who are kind of in that first and second phase of, of the housing cycle. And the issue is that people, as they age, their needs of their houses, their housing needs change, and, and what you're ending up seeing is homes that fall into disrepair. Either, we, we, we've all heard the, you know, story of, of the, the family that they kind of closed that second floor off when they, they, they get a little bit older, they kind of live on the first floor, and when you're not watching, things kind of happen. You know, the toilet may stop working, the roof may start leaking, those type of things. And, and what ends up happening is eventually, as, as people move through the housing cycle, those homes try to go back on the market, and they're very outdated. And it makes it difficult for somebody to come in and, and reinvest in that home. So they turn into rental units, they turn into those, that type of conversation that we're, that we're having. What the beauty of these is, is that these can now give people an option. And they could look at this and say, wow, you know, this, this is a great option, a brand-new units, there's zero entry, I don't have to worry about lawn maintenance or snow removal or any of that type of stuff. I'm going to, you know, begin to look at that. Really, what we've heard from people in the community is they'd like options. Some people love their homes, they want to stay in their homes, but we have some people who, who are looking at, you know, I'd really like to, to move somewhere else, but I don't want to live in a Wesley Towers or Hutchinson Lofts or something like that. I still want to kind of have that idea of a home. So we're really excited because we think, you know, as we begin to get more of these type of units, we may begin to kind of clear that logjam up, and hopefully, you know, begin to get, you know, maybe some new people into the community, and kind of begin to restore that housing balance a little bit. So for that reason, that's one of the reasons Housing Commission, you know, really was very supportive of this, this project, because we do think that it can address the very real need that we have for age-restricted housing in our community, so.
And Ryan, can you remind me when the decision is made by Housing Resources Corporation? Is that around May?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll know on all four of the submissions at that point?
Yeah, we should know late spring, early summer.
Great. Thank you. Are there further questions, or is there a motion on this item?
Motion to consider letter and resolution of the support of the Interfaith Towns Home 2 Development.
So are you...
Isn't that 7B that we were just...
Yeah, just down below, motion to accept and approve.
Oh, I have to say that.
Yeah.
Motion to accept and approve, amend and approve and deny the recommendation of the Housing Commission to provide a letter and resolution of support of the Interfaith Towns Home 2 Development, authorize and make it a sign. Right?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, accept and approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Sorry. Still with this.
That's fine, yeah. No, you did great. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hi, Rose DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7C, consider amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map designation for 925 West Fourth Avenue.
Is that the one we discussed last time? It is.
It is.
Did he come today?
He's here. Mr. Galen Driling is here.
Aaron, can we, yeah, and, because we discussed this at the last meeting, I don't know, we have to go through the whole thing, but...
Yeah. He can come and talk. You have any questions for him, he's happy to help answer anything for you.
Well, I bought this place on 925 West Fourth. It's, it used to be the old Hamilton Roofing Place, and well, it's got this business out front, I mean, it's an office building, but I want to convert it into a beauty salon and make a little extra money and bring more revenue into Hutchinson, Kansas, and that's, that's what I want to do.
And one of my main concerns that I brought up last time was the fact that the backside of the property is still going to be used, what that's zoned for, right? So it's just that small building in the front.
Right.
And one of my concerns is you have a business that's adjacent to that, that could be negatively, negatively impacted, and that's been a business that has been there, and for just one small portion, and there's no way to, it's, it'd still be adjacent to the other property. Is there any other, like an office or any other alternative to, instead of putting a beauty salon in a, in a property that's, that's in that zoning?
I haven't, I haven't come up with any yet.
Because it's like, you have to, you know, think about, have you spoken to your neighbor that you're adjacent to about the impact?
No, I haven't. I should, I should, but I don't think there's any concern, because you know, I got parking space, spaces up there. It's not going to be high traffic, it's just, you know, people just going to do their perms and nails and, you know.
I think it's because once it gets zoned like that, correct me if I'm wrong, it can then have some residential built up on it, and then at that point, the adjacent party, would maybe have to put up like extra barriers or fences?
Yes, with the, with the reason that would allow the possibility of residential going in, and if a residential use is established on the property, that would then require neighbors...
And so really what we're concerned about is future, let's say you get it rezoned, you have your salon there, you retire, you sell it to someone else, and then they decide to build residential, now we have an impact on the adjacent property.
But my concern is, I got that big parking lot. I was going to convert them all into storage buildings, so I don't think anybody's going to put a residential home in there. See what I'm saying?
Because you won't have enough room for it at that point?
What, storage buildings?
Yeah, once you have those in.
Oh, yeah. It's going to almost go, I could fence it up.
As a city, we always have to think about the long-term. What, what, you know, we have, we, we understand the need and the want. And like, I'm pro-business. I want to see a business go in there. But we also have to think about the impact in the future. And so it's a very, very, very hard decision for me personally.
There would be additional standards for the storage buildings if this was zoned to the EN district.
Oh, really?
The storage buildings fit within an industrial zone.
Yes, they're an industrial.
This business as proposed does not fit.
Does not fit, correct. And there are office uses that are allowed in this zone that the building is suitable for.
Right.
And just a quick refresher that the Planning Commission voted eight to zero to deny the rezoning. You recall that?
Aaron, can you briefly summarize the thinking of the Planning Commission in terms of their reason for denial?
Based on the factors? The eight factors here, they basically were, came to the same conclusion that you're discussing here, that while they'd like to see additional businesses come into the community, the way that the building, the property is developed currently is industrial. And to put, to change that to commercial would create a lot of non-conforming uses on that lot. And it would negatively impact neighbors. We already have two neighbors that have spoken out negatively on the project as well.
Yeah, thanks.
I think it's very clear, Mr. Drelling. All of us are in favor of your storage buildings. We're just not in favor of a beauty salon in that particular location.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think the other is a good deal. This is what we consider spot zoning, which makes it undesirable for the development as a whole.
Are there further questions or comments or a motion on this item?
Yes, I'll move to, let's see, deny the request.
You'll need to approve the denial. I know.
Prove the denial.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Don't have me try this one.
There we go. For an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, Section N 1-7-B of the 2017-2037 Comprehensive Plan for Hutchinson, Kansas, based on a finding that the request does not meet the factors required for approval.
Second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
I'm sorry. I think you need to develop a business, and I applaud you for bidding a business. I'm going to say no.
Hyros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7D, consider request to rezone property at 925 West Fourth Avenue.
No other comments from staff?
Yeah, this is essentially the same thing. Therefore, I will move to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny the request to rezone 925 West Fourth Avenue from I-2 Industrial District to EN Established Neighborhood District based upon the due consideration of the factors shown.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
What, what's this, we rezoned after we?
Well, this is a continuation of the same item. So if you were in support of the business and you voted no on that, you'd probably vote no on this one as well.
Okay. I vote no.
Hyros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7E, consider amendment to Hutchinson City Code, Section 21-103.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, you'll have a series of ordinances to consider, all with updating our various building codes. And we start with the first section of 21-103. But you're going to be addressed on all of those by Trent Maxwell and probably some members of the Building Trades Board first.
I got to find them.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Counsel. Trent Maxwell, building official for the city. I'm going to give you a little background of how we came to today. And then we've got members of the board that are here. We've got staff and from the fire marshal, as well as myself, that can answer any questions. So to go back through, so this is our Building Trades Board that was pulled together to go through the codes. We knew we were going to look at, adopting the revisions to the 2012 codes that we already had adopted. So today, we're looking at the 2018s. The board met six times over seven months. And our board members were appointed by the mayor and want to thank them for showing up, putting in the time and effort. Codebooks aren't fun to read. They're not fun to discuss. There's, there's nothing real joyful about it, but they showed up. We met for, like I said, six months over, or six times over seven months. The members of the board, we've got John Richardson, who is our current chair, Curtis Mitchell, our vice chair, other members, Justin Ray, Ron Sturgeon, Laura Meyer-Dick, Jack Martin, Jeff Thompson, Thompson, Dusty Moore, and Kelly McMurphy. With this group, we each gave them categories or subcommittees that were within their field. Some of those leaders of the different categories are for electrical, Dusty Moore. Plumbing was Justin Ray. Mechanical, Ron Sturgeon. International Building Code, Curtis Mitchell, John Richardson, and Kelly McMurphy. And the International Residential Code, Jeff Thompson. Some of the key points that came out in all the different discussions that they had with their own subcommittees, as well as within our board. And I'll go through some of these key points. And then, like I say, any questions, we can answer them. The Hutchinson Career Technical Education Academy requested that we adjust the provisions for their licensing and their ability to do work within those school programs to allow the students to be a little bit more hands-on. The recommendation from the board is to get in line with what our licensed trade abilities currently have, and that is two apprentice per journeyman or two apprentice per master. They were all in full support of that. And so that's part of our changes to part of our licensing. The IBC code for residential loft in a downtown building will say it needs to be sprinkled. There are no exceptions. There are no changes to it. For 2007 on and probably before that, we've always allowed for two means of egress, a two-hour fire separation, an emergency escape, and then fire smoke detection between both floors or multiple floors. We wanted to make sure we had that in writing, that that was part of the code and not a verbal pass that has been happening over the last 13 or 14-plus years. So we wrote that out, that if they do not want to sprinkle the building, they could do those same steps to make it safe for those one- and two-family dwellings or one- and two-family lofts in a downtown building. So that is one of the amendments that we put to the International Building Code in lieu of a sprinkler system for a one- and two-family dwelling in a loft situation. The board also agreed or approved keeping our amendments to some of our energy efficiency items in the residential code. Some of those items are duct testing. You would hire a company to come in and test the leakage of your ductwork within a house. We currently require if the duct is in a unconditioned space, that the duct is sealed. If it is in a conditioned space, meaning like a basement or main floor, that we do not require that duct sealing. All your commercial applications are always sealed. But for residential, we approved to remove that requirement. Along with that is what's called a blower door test. At the end of construction, the company will set up a test to check how much infiltration from the outside elements are coming into the house. And there are leakage requirements with the whole entire envelope of the house. We've removed that requirement, or we are recommending to remove that requirement. The board approved electrical disconnect, and this is for commercial and residential to be readily accessible, to be located, readily accessible location outside a building and within one foot of the utility meter. The nickname of the 2020 Electrical Code is called a fireman disconnect. And the purpose is, is any point of wire coming from the meter till it hits your main disconnect panel is an unprotected wire. A lot of the times in our houses, we'll have them in garages. We'll have them in basements, utility closets. That pathway from that meter panel, or from the panel to the meter, is just a live wire that is never disconnected unless someone physically pulls the meter. So this is to make it a little bit more safe. If homeowners have some work they want to do and they want to de-energize everything that's actually inside the house, this disconnect would allow them to make those repairs or changes safely. And the last thing, this came from our IBC group, and this is to do a special inspections for specific projects. I'm going to read through these notes. Item four, the contractor's permitted to employ and approved, so to back up, special inspections, our staff, we are certified to do inspections for commercial, structural inspections. Special inspection is just that in the name. It's special. We are not trained in welding. We are not trading, trained in certain bolting. We do not test concrete or grout for strength or anything like that. So this is specifically talking to items that are not within our department's ability. The contractor's permitted to employ an approved agency where the contractor is also the owner. Typically, how that reads now is the owner is responsible to have all contracts with the special inspection agency. It keeps the bias away from a contractor having maybe a little bit of leverage over that company providing those inspections. So if the owner is also the contractor, that contract can remain with them. And then this is, the special inspections are not required where all the filing items are met. Construction is no more than 30-foot eve height and no more than 30,000 square foot floor area. The structure contains no more than two stories, and the second-story area is no more than 20% of the net floor area. The structure use group is one of the following. Group B is your office space. Group F is a factory. Group M is mercantile or retail space. S is storage, and U is typically like an ag use. It's an accessory use to a main, primary use of a building. Any portion of a structure designed as a storm shelter shall not be exempt from special inspection requirements. And my only note I would have on that, this recommendation came from the board. I didn't feel too comfortable with that recommendation. That's the only one I'm not fully in support of. And that's mainly because of the business use and the mercantile use being included into the 30,000 square foot space. But like I said, I am here. We've got staff from the fire department here. We've got board members that showed up. If you have any questions for us, we're here to answer them.
What are any of the most significant changes? Like, is there anything that's changed? Or is it just we're adopting the new one with minor changes?
It is the new, so, we're within the same family. The NFPA is our National Electrical Code. Every three years, they make revisions to those codes. And we, on us, probably every six years, make the adoption. It's a long, tedious process to go through it. The ICC is the other group of family codes. We're on the 2012 currently. Since 12 to 18, they came out with a 15. We did not get on board to do it. Like I said, it's just time-consuming. So, same code, just revisions that technology, whether there's been a significant tragedy, whether it's earthquakes, whether it's hurricanes.
Well, in this particular one, what's?
Well, the, the big changes would be just what you just, just what you.
I know. But what was the biggest impact? Because I will be honest with you, I have a hard time following what you were saying because I'm not in tune with.
Maybe if we could have John, John, were you on, John Richardson, were you on this particular committee?
Yes.
Do you mind coming up and sharing from a contractor's perspective what the impact of these changes would have? I spoke with, with you.
Yeah, I guess I can.
Put it in layman's terms.
From, from your perspective, you were sharing that these are a little more, they provide a little more leniency than our last.
Well, there's a couple of spots. And I actually, actually, I don't have it memorized because it's long and boring. But there's a few items that are, here are the main things that have changed. So it could be things like the amount of people per restroom required in a space. It's, there's a lot of small tweaks for each revision. But the longer we wait without adopting, so, we're at 2012 now. We're adopting 2018. Wichita just recently adopted 2018. McPherson's on 2009, Pratt's 2015. The longer we wait, the bigger impact it's going to be on changes. Whereas if we just make changes every three to six years, because it's only, it only changes once every three years.
Yeah.
That's the schedule. It's not as big of an impact on contractors trying to figure out, okay, I'll just have to remember these few little things because that's all that's really changed, instead of I've got to completely rearrange how I do things. And to me, that's kind of the big, the bigger case here is making sure we're, we're not, we're just going to make, let's adopt it. We're going to move on. We just have to keep staying up to date. I'm sure there's some insurance impacts and, you know, other aspects that I don't play in. As far as what he was discussing, we're more of the amendments we're making as a city to make sure we clarify things, things that we feel as local citizens fit. We adjust the international code to fit our city a little bit better without completely drawing it from scratch.
Okay.
So contractors and people from outside the city aren't making big adjustments. It's, there's a lot of familiarity to how we do things.
And what was the, the cutoff electricity? Can you go into more of that for me a little bit?
Yeah.
Is that just on newer construction or any kind of remodel?
It'll be on any service reconstruct or new construction. On an existing situation, it will never happen. If we have an ice storm where people are building services again like we had in 2009 and 2013, then potentially, those would be impacted. But it would be mainly new.
What's the cost of that?
It depends on the contractor. I mean, homeowners, you can do your own if you're comfortable with it. But on average, our permit valuation, which is what numbers we're getting from contractors for residential homes, is probably $600.
$600. And it's just where, and you're talking about where the meter is and then where the fuse box is, the?
Well, and that, that's the point. So if they're not rebuilding the panel, then it's just the meter, the riser, the weatherhead, the wiring for that, and then a disconnect switch. Cost would be less than $500 for a homeowner to do it and/or a contractor to do it. You get into a commercial situation, I guess the impact of the switch is very minimal. All the other stuff is going to get done regardless. So the switch, I would imagine is less than a hundred bucks.
Which would be normal on new construction. They would just automatically.
And a lot do. Commercial construction, they're very well-thought-out because they're engineered. Residential is probably the biggest impact this would have. And so it would be the additional cost of, of one more switch.
And, okay, that was my question. Because I didn't understand exactly where the switch was at.
Yep. Outside is always going to be the meter. I don't know of any cases where the meter is still on the pole, maybe an accessory building. But it's going to be on the house. Directly associated with that meter, still on the outside, you'll have another little metal box that will have a switch on it.
Okay.
Trent, if I could ask this question, it's kind of an open-ended question. But good as knows, this body here has had multiple, multiple discussions over the years in terms of Hutchinson's building codes.
Yes.
Right or wrong. And we've never seemed to get down to the fact check, actually. And I know that's frustrating for you. Or the viewpoint of some in terms of the interpretation. And I guess my open-ended question is, is that in fairness to Hutchinson, in terms of the previous codes that we've operated under along with these proposed revisions, are we within the framework of the IBC code in comparison to the Salinas, and the McPhersons, the Wichitas, to give really a fair assessment of how are the codes not only perceived, but implemented and interpreted in Hutchinson versus other cities?
Sure. I made a little list. I went through in seven, 12, 15, 22.
Is that that list?
22 different cities. I polled what current code they have adopted. The easiest way for any contractor to do work in any city is to understand what codes they're working under. There are a mixed batch in, in certain cities of, some will have the 09, the 12, the 15, and the 18. And the ICC is a family of codes. If you adopt the 2018 IBC, you should adopt the 2018 IMC. That's not always the case. There are some unions that are involved that love the Uniform Plumbing Code, the Uniform Mechanical Code. And so if you look through those notes, some of those have different years. It's because they had a strong union group lobbying for a specific code year and model. Wichita has amendments as, as far as just the other groups adopting different years of code. Those are more comparable with us, whether we're on the 12, the 15, or the 18. But Wichita has so many amendments to their code, that would be the one outlining city that you wouldn't, no one would probably compare, even if they adopted all 18 codes, which they're on part of that. Their amendments supersede how many pages probably the code is from what I've been told from other contractors. So it's hard to predict how to build without having their book of amendments. All the other cities, their amendments are very minimal, like ours. They'll just go through and tweak different things. But I've got a lot of responses back that Wichita has a significant amount of amendments to their codes. So, yes, I think we're right in line with all the other cities, whether we're on the 12 or the 18. As John alluded. the 18. As John alluded, contractors are being trained on current code. They're being tested, which is required, on current code. The 12 is not even going to be allowed anymore, so it would be hard for us to say, go take a test on a 15 or 18 code that we don't even enforce. And it's the same for electricians or anyone, so.
Mr. Trent, I'm an electrician. I'm proud of you on that. First disconnecting means of the, we've been needing that for a long time. I've been hearing a lot of problems that's, business don't want to come in here because of our codes. Can you tell me what do you think the problem is? Is it, is it the sprinkler code or what is it that's?
I actually don't think it's true.
Okay.
These are international codes. It's not just a Hutchinson code. It's not just a Kansas code. Most of our perfect developments are from the out-of-town developers coming in to develop. The only time that we've heard any complaints on that I would love for fact checking to happen is on our local property owners that want to develop something on their own. It's their first time treading through those waters. They question everything. They don't understand everything, and they don't agree with everything. The contractors that are doing this every day understand it. It's not anything new. It's not anything that they feel is unfair or different. And that's the biggest difference between your out-of, I don't believe it's true. You can probably pull a survey from our out-of-town groups, whether it was the Coles, whether it was the Biggies, whether it was Dillons. Those were out-of-town contractors that came through. The projects went up flawless. There were no issues. There were no hiccups. That's how development should be.
I'm curious if you wouldn't mind, Curtis or John, you're both local contractors who work in multiple cities. Would you feel comfortable sharing your experience?
Good, Curtis.
I'm Curtis Mitchell. I'm co-owner of Mark Vorsky Construction, a local general contractor here. And sorry about my voice. It's not because of the stupid Super Bowl. My daughter went to Worlds, so I'm a little hoarse for that, so I apologize. So I'm on this building trades committee, and I had too been hearing the same things you, Steve. So we don't typically do a lot of work outside of the city of Hutchery, Reno County, just because we don't have to, and if we don't have to, we don't want to. But we, last year, we had crews in Kingman, Newton, Andale, McPherson, and Pratt. And I will tell you, Hutchinson is by far the easiest to deal with. I'm still waiting for blood tests to get back from McPherson to see if we're licensed over there still. Sedgwick County says I'm B negative, but, so anyway, it's atrocious. In fact, we got halfway down the road with a home in Andale, Sedgwick County, and we told the contractor, or the homeowner, listen, we are not your contractor for this. We have a couple of recommendations of contractors licensed in Sedgwick County, but how they got licenses is beyond me. So I would personally like to make, and I've told Trent this before, I thank him and the city staff here. The frustrations with people have mostly been the processes here and how to, what step one is, step two, and step three, and those have been remedied within the last year or two, in my opinion. So as far as the codes go, yeah, these aren't any different. In fact, they're less restrictive if I can say anything from the 18 to the 2012, what view I've seen. So especially in structural design and things like that, so.
I'd actually like to comment on that. One of the things that I've actually heard too is the communication between planning and development and code enforcement, that someone will be told this and told that, and there's really a lack of structure in our city and communication when these people that have never trenched through these waters have to go through, and mistakes are made, and money's lost, and you have to tear something down because one place said yes, the other one comes in afterwards and says no. And I understand that you offer a program to where everybody comes in, but like I said, I know that there's a lot of, where people just don't know about half the programs here. And so I would like to say that you're probably right. It probably, and you say it's gotten better, but I haven't seen the results of it getting better, and I would push the committee to even make it more better because we really need to work on helping, you know, we have, we want small business here, right? We want to work on entrepreneurship, and all that has to do is, these are people that haven't trenched through the waters, that aren't doing it on a daily basis. So we really need to have best practices to get these people through this without having unnecessary costs.
Yeah. They're not maybe. I have not experienced any of that, and when I have questions, they respond, and it's not within the hour always, but I'm not the only person doing work here in town. I understand that. But yeah, I feel like my opinion only is that people just like to be negative about things. You go through this stuff at every city, and I try to be the ultimate positive person when I approach those other jurisdictions, and you still get resistance. They make mistakes too, and so anyway.
I would just hope that we don't have to look and like, other cities do this. We really shouldn't be comparing other cities to us. We really should be striving to do the best, to be the best, so that we can set ourselves apart.
Madam Mayor, I'd just say that we've had the development review committee in process for two or three, longer, many years, and basically that process is the planning, inspection, the developer, the architects, engineers, all sit in a room and talk about a project from day one, what's ahead. And so I don't know who we made tear something down.
I think those are more the bigger projects we're talking about.
Excuse me. I don't know who we made tear something down. You said that. But that process has been in place. The communication's there, and it has been, and we'll continue to work to improve it. But that communication is there. We're right next to each other, planning and inspection have worked together well for many years, so.
Well, I do appreciate your comment that we can always work to be better, and I appreciate the service of the Board of Trades because they're really working on making this process better and better for developers and anybody who wants to invest in our community. So I appreciate the time you've put into it.
Well, I'd like to speak a couple of points on that. So I find myself in a position where I'm a commercial contractor. I don't really play in the same sandbox on residential projects. So basically, I'm in industrial parks for the most part. I work in, within an hour of Hutchinson. So I like working in Hutchinson because it commutes a lot shorter for me to get to the job site. I also find myself in a position where I'm very fortunate to be on planning and zoning commission and the building trades board at the same time. About three years ago, we had a group of people. Hutchinson's really good at having groups and committees get together. I noticed that when I moved back a few years back. But we had a group of people get together to kind of identify barriers of entry for small businesses. So we sat down, we made a list of things. Some of the, some of the things we made a list of that were barriers are things we can't really touch. I mean, we just can't go there. Yeah, it's a barrier, but it's a necessity. Three or four of the items really fell on more of the planning and zoning side. Landscaping requirements, parking lot requirements, sign requirements. One of the things that changed, as an example, we wanted people to be able to purchase a vacant building and move in and operate their business with as few restrictions as we could get. So we wanted to change things to where you buy a building and you don't have to pave the whole parking lot right off the bat. You know, how can we do this to where, you know, within the realm of safety and building code, we can make it easier? The other item we talk about is, one of the items came up with special inspections. And Mr. Maxwell and myself have had many discussions, respectable discussions, on the subject, and we both sit somewhat on opposite sides of it. He has very good points. As a contractor, it really doesn't affect me having special inspections, third-party inspections on the job site. There's a little bit of delay in coordination. It's not a big deal. What it does is, it's one more cost that the customer incurs. Most of my projects is somewhere between, I tell them a budget between 1% and 3%. Usually sits about 1% on the total project cost. I can, and I try to separate strong opinion from fact, sometimes those two things can get muddled together. I have not had a project where I've had special inspections, other than in Hutchinson. To be fair, I'm getting ready to start a project in Salina that I think will have special inspections on it. Won't be surprised by that. But working in other jurisdictions around here, I've not had that for the types of projects that I do. And that's usually, I try to be proactive with the local code enforcement, talk to them about what they're going to require, what they think of the project. It's just a good process. If for any reason I forget something and they feel like I've been proactive up to that point, they don't think I'm trying to pull the wool over their eyes on anything. The, in the city of Hutchinson, it's been good to be able to sit on, in on the building review committee, because I can take an aspect of it from the general contractor and sometimes from the viewpoint of the customer on what they want. So when something, an alarm gets raised by a certain group, maybe it's code enforcement, or planning and zoning, or engineering, they say, well, we don't want it this way, and they explain why, we can find an alternative right there that I think is going to be a low-cost alternative for my customer. Because if I'm not looking out for the best interest, they're going to find someone else who will. But a lot of these things have changed, and it's up to us to make sure that that gets out too, because we definitely want perception and facts to be separated. But that's what I wanted to touch on that. The planning and zoning and inspections department, I think, have communicated very well in the last, I don't know if it's got, I'm sure it's been good since I've been involved with it. I don't know if that's an improvement from before or if it's just the way it is, but it's been pretty good since I've been involved.
Well, and John, the problems you have with special inspections in Hutch will be remedied by inclusion of that section in the code, right? We are making an amendment to the code.
Let me clarify this just a little bit. It's not my problem with special inspections as much as it is for small business owners.
No, I get it. I get it.
That count pennies and the nickels.
Yeah, but, but we are somewhat solving that through amending this code.
It allows them a recourse to have an option.
Have an option.
They can still do it. It allows a tool within the code that we've adopted to, you know what, I'm comfortable with my general contractor. They've got a reputation here. There's a number of general contractors in town that are very capable of doing projects, and I feel comfortable with this for my 10,000 square foot warehouse building. It's a big dumb box. I don't want special inspections. I don't want to pay an extra $6,000 or $7,000.
So you feel like that section, 1704-2, puts us more in alignment with other communities you operate in?
I feel it does, but again, opinion. So, but that, I want to make sure I'm clear that that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
As a contractor, yes.
I got one more comment, Mr. Trent, if you would please, sir. How are we? And letting all the contractors know we're switching over to the new code book. This, when they go to a job, tell them one of the new code book, electricians or plumbers or so.
Well, in the field, we'll start educating them, but we'll send out a notice.
Okay. And these would not go into effect until?
May 1.
May 1.
Yep. So that'll give us time to educate from today till May 1.
Seems to me that I think it's incumbent upon all of us as elected officials to, first of all, respect and appreciate the professionalism that Trent and his staff, along with the input from the building trades group, that we need as a body, I think, to be an advocate of, to have the assurances and the comfort level that our UBC codes are in line, that they are not as restrictive as some have said they would be, and that we be an advocate of, it's good to do business and it's appropriate to do business in Hutchinson to overcome this notion of it's, there are too many down restrictions, and that's why companies don't come to Hutchinson. We've got to overcome that. And hopefully, all of us can be that voice of you all that let's really get to the facts and to dispel all of these rumors that are derogatory toward our community, and we've got to overcome that.
Good morning. My name is Laura Meyer-Dick, and I served as the only non-contractor on the council. So Sarah, I understand and completely what you were saying when you were a little bit confused, because when I walked in and we had codes to read, I was like, whoa, I didn't sign up for this. But I have served on the committee for about a year now. John, to address what you just said, I fully support what you just said. To me, over the last year, I've heard those rumors for 52 years now. Some are true, some are not. It's perception a lot, but I do believe that we do have a cultural issue in the buildings department, that we do not have an attitude of yes. And I have talked to Trent about that in our meetings, and I've said, I'm not a let's-risk-life-safety person. I'm not asking for that, but I'm asking that we need to be reasonable. People invest their money in this town, they need to make a return. And our department, they oversee it. What I've learned is, our department is overseeing things based on the most extreme use of a project. So if it's this many square feet, they're going to view it as a nightclub, whether, you know, depending on how it's used. So that was very disconcerting to me for someone who's passionate about growth in Hutchinson. And I think that unfortunately, culture comes from, that you all have to drive that culture change, and we need to have a change of culture to have more of an attitude of yes. The contractors that I work with talk about Kingman, and he says they're great to work for. They have the same codes as we do, I believe.
They were.
They were. They have the same codes, but it's all the way you interpret it, and it's the perception, and that lies with the council to provide leadership for. More specifically, I'd like to direct you to page 288, which states that these codes will omit the Board of Appeals for the International Fire Code. That was never discussed in the Building Trades Board and does not come with a recommendation from our committee. I do believe it's very undemocratic to eliminate this paragraph, and it does not allow, go along with the spirit of our constitution. It provides, our constitution provides for a balance of power, and when you take that Board of Appeals away and the fire code, you're leaving the power to all one person. Eliminating this.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So I do think this is item O. So we may be skipping ahead, but that's okay.
Okay.
But I can come back up. I did have a question is, well, and maybe we should just reserve this till item O, because I.
Yeah, I would, I think at some point, we've got to start, you know, going through each one of the codes.
Okay.
And we can, if there's specifics about each of them, we can talk about them then.
Yeah, Laura, if you don't mind.
That's fine. My request to you as a council, though, is just to continue as what John said and what Sarah said, improving communications and improving the attitude of the culture in that department, to have an attitude of yes, and economic development in Hutchinson.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we'll definitely want to address Laura's comment when we get to item O. This is the longest agenda ever, by the way. But right now, are there, are there additional questions on item J, adoption of the international existing building code?
What happened to E?
We're still on item E.
E.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I skipped ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I can, we know that Linda's going to write this down verbatim. So to somewhat simplify this, can I move to approve the ordinance amending section 21-103 as presented?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I don't know where we're at.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We're on page four.
We're on number E.
We're trying to, trying to skip forward.
Is there further discussion or questions?
All right, I'm on the right page. Sorry.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7F, consider adoption of 2018 International Building Code.
I would move to adopt the amended section 2018 International Building Code.
As presented. I'll second.
Is there further discussion, questions from the audience? No? Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7G, consider adoption of 2018 International Plumbing Code.
Are there certain amendments you want to go over on this one, Trent, on each individual one, or?
My brief statement at the front are kind of the main things. We did, as you know, probably the biggest plumbing thing we've had as a question was drinking fountains, which we amended out.
Drinking fountains, we saw that.
It's been amended. And any current amendment we had of the 12, we kept in the 18s, so.
Okay. I will move to approve the ordinance amending article 3 of chapter 21 of the International Plumbing Code as presented.
Second. Further discussion or questions from anybody? Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7H, consider adoption of 2018 International Mechanical Code.
Is there a motion?
Let's see. I would move to approve the amended 2018 International Mechanical Code as recommended.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7I, consider adoption of 2017 International.
Item 7I, consider adoption of 2017 International Electrical Code.
Further questions or a motion on this item?
I will move to approve the ordinance amending Article 5 of Chapter 21 related to the National International Electrical Code as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, questions from the audience? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7J, consider adoption of 2018 International Existing Building Code.
Trent, I do have a question here, and this is more of a procedural question. I noted in the draft there that in the exceptions area, 705-111 entrances, 705-12 elevators and so on, that those have all been deleted. Are those then placed in other ordinances, or are they completely deleted, or procedurally, how do you handle that?
So if they've been deleted, one of two things, we either felt it was too restrictive, and we didn't want to enforce that. One of the things we noticed in a couple of these codes, and me and Paul visited about it, I didn't bring it up, but there were some changes that were more restrictive. It goes against what we have required in the past, and we deleted those sections to remove that obstacle, if you will. So it could be one of two things.
Could be one of two things.
That it was found in another code, or...
Found in another code, okay.
It was too restrictive.
That clarifies that for me, yeah. With that, I would move to approve the amended 2018 International Existing Building Code as recommended.
Second.
Further discussion? Anyone from the audience want to comment? Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7K, consider adoption of 2018 International Fuel Gas Code.
I will move to approve the ordinance amending Article 16 of Chapter 21 of the Code of the International Fuel Gas Code as presented. That was a mouthful, sorry.
Is there a second on the gas code?
Second.
Further comments? Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7L, consider adoption of 2018 International Residential Code.
I had one question on this, Trent, on the section about detached accessory structures. Are we just allowing for more options kind of under that heading without a permit? So we're just allowing people to build tool and storage sheds, playhouses, et cetera, without a permit?
So, yes, that's Chapter 1, it's administration. Those are exceptions to when a permit is required. That number 120 or 200 for a storage building has changed from 120 to 200 every code cycle. We've kept ours at 120 since 2003, and so that's what that change is to reflect.
Okay. I think that was the only question I had. Are there further questions, or is there a motion on this item?
I would move to approve the amended Article 17 of the 2018 International Residential Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions on the residential code?
I got a question. Mr. Trent, is this, this outbuildings and everything, this is Paul's on this, on this particular site? Outbuildings, I mean by sheds and all, that's what I mean by...
As far as what Jade commented on?
Yes, yes.
Yes, any accessory building, 120 square foot or less, has been always exempt from building permits, and so we kept that exemption the same.
Okay. I get a lot of questions about that particular outbuildings and stuff like that, so.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? I believe we had a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7M, consider adoption of 2018 International Property Maintenance Code.
Were there any major changes?
Any major changes?
I didn't see any.
No, so we kept all the amendments from the 2011 community and meetings and adoption. We have not amended them whatsoever. We just keep adding them to the new revisions. So they're the same as what the 2003 version was.
So the current International Property Maintenance Code is the same as, so there's no change to that?
Correct.
Well, it looked like there were some ground fault circuit interruption protection. Is that different?
We did that just to clarify. It's always been the requirement, but we get a lot of questions about that, usually on our rental complaints. It's one of the biggest questions. So it was to help spell it out, if you will, make it clear and understandable.
Okay, but it's not a new restriction?
No.
Okay.
And that came from our electrical subcommittee, told us to, it'd be good to put that in there so it's easily understandable, so.
Okay. Questions from the council or the audience on this item?
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. I'm going to do the next two items before we have a short recess, so if anyone's wanting one, we'll be there soon. Next item, please.
Item 7N, consider adoption of 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
Now, if I may, Mayor, just one comment on this. This used to be in the residential code under Appendix G.
Okay.
They pulled it out and put it in its own book, so that's the only reason why it's considered a new code as far as adoption purposes.
I see. Okay, is there a motion on the swimming pool and spa code?
I would move to approve the amended ordinance, Chapter 21, for the adoption of 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code recommendation.
Is there a second on this item?
Second.
Further questions from the council or the audience? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7O, consider adoption of 2018 International Fire Code.
And this is where I did want to bring up that Laura Meyer-Dick had a comment on page 288.
288.
And that was the amending out of Section 109 Board of Appeals, International Fire Code. I know that historically, we've always omitted that. Is that the case, Paul?
What's that?
We've always omitted?
Yes, we have always omitted.
I was wondering, would it be appropriate for fire code appeals to be heard under the Building Trades Board, or?
They don't have the expertise under the Building Trades Board.
So would it be appropriate for us to have an additional board for appeals?
Tony Arpin addressed that.
Mm-hmm. We were...
I'll explain it to him. We're having the exclusion about the appeals on fire code and why we don't include that provision.
Oh, basically because if I read it right, I think I do, in order for the appellate board, you have to have somebody that basically knows, you have to put a board together that knows about the fire codes. And there's, they can't be a city, they can't be a city employee, I forget what the other stipulations were, but basically, there's nobody around here that you could get to sit on that board, that could sit on that board. Because of that, you'd have, you'd have to bring in people from other jurisdictions, other firemen from McFirst and Salina, places like that.
So, thanks for explaining that. What would the recourse be for someone who had a different interpretation of the fire code? So they currently don't have anyone to appeal to, right?
No, I don't believe they ever have had anybody to appeal to.
Well, I think that's been an issue in our community, so I know it's been brought up, and I didn't know if there was any discussion needed to, opinions on that. Laura, did you want to make further comments on why you feel that that's necessary?
I think eliminating, and I know it has been eliminated before, but it was not something that the committee discussed, because we have had some cases that this has become an issue, and we've really needed a fire code board of appeals, and it's not there for our citizens to have. And I don't believe that's in the spirit of what our constitution says. Our constitution says we should have checks and balances. I am sure there are retired firemen here in this town, or in neighboring towns, or engineers that have expertise in fire safety that we could get. I'm not questioning any of the fire code. I'm not trying to put firefighters in jeopardy. I'm just saying, we need to have checks and balances in our system here in Hutchinson. So I would ask you to reinstate that.
Thoughts from the council?
I can read you the qualifications.
That'd be great.
Of who's supposed to be on the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals shall consist of members who are qualified by experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to hazards of fire, explosions, hazardous conditions, or fire protection systems, and are not employees of the jurisdiction.
So would the retired fall into being able to do that, or could the fire department provide specialized training to a board?
I suppose if you could find retired firemen that want to sit on that board, or like I say, you could go to an outside jurisdiction, you can maybe see if somebody from Salina, they just can't be employed by this jurisdiction.
But could we provide training for a board, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure what that looks like.
Someone that's retired?
I think retirees would be an option. Retirees would be an option.
You could provide training, but by the time you train somebody in fire explosives, hazardous conditions, fire protection systems, you're talking years of training.
So it'd be most likely someone who's retired, then?
More than likely.
Yeah. Have we ever tried to put up a board, just to kind of fish to see if it is plausible?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Chief, did you have some comments on this?
Yeah, just a couple of comments on this. Steve Beer, Fire Chief, Hutchinson Fire Department. I'm not aware of one other city that has a panel like that. I will put off feelers out today here via a national group throughout the United States on that, and see what feedback I get, but I'm not aware of any group. I think I'm very proud of our staff and what they do. Out of over 2,500 building code inspections that we do on an annual basis, in my three-year period here, I've never had anybody come into my office and have a concern or an issue about codes. Obviously, we've been dealing with one code issue with a specific downtown property, but that's been the only one in my three years on the job here in Hutchinson. And I think that speaks volume of what they do. In fact, I would challenge it because my inspectors, my fire marshal, Trent, they are so proactive on the approach when we get a new business in town and stuff. We actually have realtors that come with these guys ahead of time before they even purchase a property, and they go through the property one-on-one with them and saying, hey, if you're going to put this type of building in, this is what you need to do. Is this building right for you, for your type of business you want to build in? And so we're so far ahead of the game proactively and meeting with everybody, and so everybody knows exactly what the expectations are prior to them even purchasing a building. And so having zero complaints besides one issue that's going on, really, you talk to Lucinda's down there, phenomenal project, that cooperation with the city and all the entities. I'm very proud of what these gentlemen do. I would say it's hard for us because I'm also Fire Chief of District 2. District 2, state which governs that, they're using 2018 codes already. So my inspectors in Fire District 2, we have to use 18 codes out of District 2, or using the 2012 codes in the city of Hutch. And so we're playing by two different standards already with just our neighboring perimeter of town compared to the citizens of the city of Hutchinson.
I appreciate your insights on comparable cities because I wasn't aware. It seems silly that it would be in the code if it's always omitted out by every city, but I know Wichita and Sedgwick doesn't have one. They have a Board of Appeals for every other subsection under the sun, but I don't think...
And I will email the chief of Sedgwick County today and find out what they have going on, and I can report back to John on that.
Any other thoughts on what's the feeling of the council? Do we want to add that back in, or keep it omitted?
Let me get this straight. We don't have a board to appeal on this right now, right? That's what they're talking about, right?
Yeah, we don't. We have a Board of Appeals for building codes.
Okay.
So overly, people who have an opinion about what they consider to be overly restrictive building codes, or a different interpretation of the building code, have a body to go to, and those are the individuals who reviewed these codes today.
If I may just add one thing of reference. When we met a couple of years ago, we had members at the chamber, I think it was called the Blue Ribbon Group. Life safety was left off the table. It was very much sounded, a loud voice, that no one would touch life safety. Interpretation is the only part that is of dispute. When someone appeals my interpretation, that's the only part, that's the only reason why this board has never met other than one time in my time here, and that was not on an interpretation issue. But that's probably why they've always amended it out. Who's going to go in and say, if it says X, Y, and Z, you're wrong? You can't, you can come here to you as a body and recommend a code change, but we're not talking interpretation, we're talking you need to install X, Y, and Z. You can't dispute or appeal that. You can only come and recommend that code to be changed. So that's, our Board of Appeals, there several times, we've said, is there an agenda item? Nope. Are we going to meet? We've counseled a few times because of that. It's there for a purpose, and our board has been aggressive with the codes and to go through them, but is there ever going to be a possibility where someone's going to amend an interpretation of fire life safety code item? Probably not.
Okay.
And if there is an issue, then, as Trent said, we change the code, change the requirement. And there's always that option, always has been.
I just figured it needed discussion.
Yeah.
I invite further discussion questions or a motion on this item.
I'd like to bring, ma'am, would you come back here? I've got a question for you.
And I apologize to the audience, the length of this, but we have to find out, what are you trying to say here? You don't want this to stay in here, or what do you, talk to me.
I'm saying that we have had one Board of Appeals case that came before the Board of Appeals. We heard that case, we voted in support of allowing a variance to the code unanimously, and then that decision was overturned by the city attorney because it wasn't our jurisdiction, even though it's in the Buildings Code, and so therefore, it would have to go to the Fire Department, and the only, there is no Board of Appeals to go to the Fire Department. So that citizen is just stuck with the answer or legal action. And I just, that's not how our country runs. We run on checks and balances. I'm not asking for any codes, code changes, I'm not asking for any of that. The Fire Department does an excellent job. I don't want to put them in jeopardy, but I think that we need to have checks and balances. If there's a personality conflict between a citizen and someone in the city staff, and there's a, that personality conflict can override a person's success at their investment,[1724.33] at their investment. And I believe that they should have checks and balances.
Okay, thank you.
Is that answered your question?
So it may be best to table this today and allow our chief to do some investigation with other municipalities in terms of how they handle or approach an appeal board. Would that be the appropriate thing to do this morning?
Council, keep in mind, this doesn't take effect till May 1.
May 1?
So if you want to come back and change one specific provision, and that's all we're talking about here, you can do that later. It's still not in effect till May 1.
So we could approve the code?
If you want to come back and add a Board of Appeals on there?
Add the Board of Appeals.
We can add it.
Could we, could we look at that at the next meeting then?
Probably not by the next meeting. I mean, we needed a little bit of research on it. So, I mean, I don't think that's a timing issue. But the point is that it could be added at any time, whether it be 30 days from now or two weeks maybe.
And it's really just a matter of making a code amendment.
Yeah.
And mainly, the effective date of May 1 is for those who are engaged in designing projects right now.
I see what you're saying.
So that they don't have to change that and have a tremendous expense to them. And by the way, that includes the city with our LEC project.
With LEC, huh?
Okay.
So we could add a Board of Appeals if we see fit later on?
Yes.
Go ahead and adopt and then get amended.
Appreciate your comments, Laura, and we will look into that. Is there a motion on this item?
Well, I would move to approve the amended Article 1 Fire Protection of Chapter 25 for the adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code as presented.
I second that.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldma?
Yes.
Deidwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvalho?
Yes. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief recess. What do you think, five minutes? It is 11:05. If we could be back by 11:10, that would be great.
Here, this rental ordinance has not worked. It did not go after the people that it needed to go after and severely penalized those of us that do take care of our properties. The criminalization of the International Property Maintenance Code is totally ridiculous. I now have a criminal record if someone does a background check on me because I was sentenced, I didn't go to jail, but I was sentenced to ninety days in jail. And this thing just needs to be repealed. There, the International Property Maintenance Code can take care of it with proper inspection and going after those that need to be gone after, like the guys that sell houses over and over again that are unfit for habitation. I don't have a place that I won't let my grandchildren live in. Matter of fact, my two grandsons have lived in my worst properties and I'll go live in if I have to. I'm not ashamed to live in my properties.
Thank you, Mr. Greaver. Are there others who would like to address the counsel on this item?
My name's Mitch Gumbel. I live at 1506 Linwood Drive. I want to show you a first picture here. This is a house on North Adams. I purchased it before the registration program. It has a new roof, has new siding, has new windows. When Jill was sick in the hospital, the lawn did get a little high one time and I got in trouble for that. But while they were there, they looked inside the windows. And when they looked in the windows, they seen boxes. Well, we sold our lake house while she was in the hospital and this is when all my problems started with the city. They said I was running an illegal storage unit out of that house because I had stuff in the house when they looked in my windows. I came in and tried to get this dealt with, with Jade Spain. He told me he didn't want to have a meeting with me. I kept asking, what did I break? They threw stuff down on the table. When I was reading it, it was all about storage units in Hutchinson, Kansas. It had nothing to do with my home. They tried to say I had four or five people running in and out of there every day. We weren't in there for six months at a time. They looked at my electric usage, they looked at my water usage, they said, "Nobody's living here. I can't own this house in Hutchinson, Kansas and let it sit." But I paid the taxes and insurance, I keep it up. I think I can do whatever I want. That was my problem because I got my finger in the face and like Laura was saying earlier, there's personalities that don't get along. So, I'm one of those people because I can't be told that if you don't listen to me, I'm going to make your life miserable. Here's my house at eleven, well, it's on North Walnut. It's a nice looking home. It's a duplex. I mean, I just don't understand why I got in trouble here. Here's the inside of this house. Looks pretty nice, doesn't it? I mean, come on. I couldn't rent this for seven months. They came in, they got me for the windows. They said every window in that house, in the house, has to open with six pounds of pressure and stay up. The house was built probably in the thirties or forties. Now, I had storm windows, I had screens. They also made me cut the sheet rock three foot off the walls in the bottom so they could check my foundation walls because they said I built walls there because you can tell that's wallpaper. It's not concrete walls. I built those walls because they said my foundations were falling in. So, they wanted to see the foundations. So, I had to take this perfectly nice home and cut it up. Then they made me pour a concrete skirt on the outside of the house, but they found out there was nothing wrong with my walls. So, I had to put the sheet rock back up. This is my life. This is what I live. Here's a house on Ninth Street. New roof, new siding, pello windows, garage in the back, all sided, roof on it. How would you drive by here and even think that's a deficient property? Or even my other one at Walnut. But this one here, when I put a whole new roof on it, I skimped a little bit. I didn't do the porch. So, I guess as they were driving by and I would never be able to see the porch from the street, they went up there and noticed that a piece of metal was off the side. So, I mean, was really doing a tight inspection, which if I was driving down the street looking for deficient properties, I wouldn't even have stopped here. So, I went ahead and put a whole new porch on it to get them off my butt. And then between the two windows on the side by the air conditioning, there used to be a window air in there. Well, I re-sided that because when I took, when I went and put central heat and air in there, well, the central air, I didn't replace that. So, that was on me. It's sited now and, but really, I shouldn't have been even messed with. Here's my house over on East Fourth. I did put that, I did put that new porch on there. This is, this is a house that, I bought it in this condition. But I did have to get new siding on there and after I put the porch on, I took the old vinyl siding off. This one I probably should have been rode up for, but I did a good job. They came back in there and they started hitting me for more things that weren't done. But it still looks better most on the block. And it's going to look better when I get it painted this spring, but I won't paint in the winter. This is a property out at 902 West Fourth. I probably, I bought this thing, you can still see the condition I've built every cottage. There's eight of them out there and it was still a dirt road. Now, that's all a concrete road. Where you see the rebar sticking up at the end, I got the block laid there. Why anybody would stop and run back there, I don't know. But...
And where is this, where's this one?
This is 902 West Fourth. This is real close to the property the guy wants to start the, I'm across the street from his salon he wants to build. There was one of my houses that needed a new cover on that, so I put the cover on. Okay, this garage here, it didn't have a new roof. All the houses had new roofs. They said that garage needed a roof because there wasn't enough sand on the shingles. So, I went ahead and put a roof on the garage. Didn't need it, wasn't leaking. And nobody lives in it, but he said it has to be up because it's on the property. The shed right here, there was some siding missing on it. I went ahead and re-sided it, put a brand-new roof on it, just to stay out of trouble. Because there was, and it needed that. But really, but this thing's an acre and a half going back. How did they find this from the street? I don't know. But these, you know, my eight houses were perfect. This is what I'm getting rode up for because I have a problem with them and they have a problem with me. So, we do need checks and balances. I need somebody that I can put grievances into that will take them serious. This house, this is one of the cottages. Now, I had a guy renting it for about five years. He was only in there for about three months, but he would come back in and do a few days and leave. He was a truck driver in Texas. His heater broke and probably two months of water in there. I didn't know until Advance came out and seen the traps around the, they were checking their traps for termites and there was water coming out from all around the house. So, that one was down. I had to take the sheet rock halfway up, pull the, had to take the kitchen cabinets out, the bathroom cabinets. It's a total rebuild. And so, there was some siding I had to take off the sides and stuff like that, just those three pieces at the end, but you know, it needed to be done. But I was working on it. I didn't need to be told, I was going to do it. Now, we're to my property at 3207 East Sherman. This is what, this is what John Vedder showed the judge and told me I had minimal work done and tried to get me thrown in jail or fined. On an illegal trial, I'd add. Okay, this is where, I've got the siding, two layers of siding tore off and I started working on it. You have the scaffold up. This is just showing different, and you can see that the back of the house is in very bad, bad shape. But I bought it this way. I didn't buy it and let it run down. Somebody else let it run down. I just bought it. This is where I'm tearing walls out that I have to replace because see, because see, I was told I did minimal work. I'm showing that I did a little more than minimal. This is the way the house looks, this is the way the house is looking right now. It is new siding. I don't have the new windows in, so I didn't paint them back on the other window frames. I do have the windows there on the property now. I just got to get them put in. The porch isn't built yet. I don't know if I have any more.
That's incredible.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, but it's, and I don't do this full-time. I still work a store, I still take care of Jill. And when you see Jill today, she's looking pretty good. But a couple of years ago, it was seven pillows. She was paralyzed here, couldn't move her arms, couldn't move her, I had to be there for everything. And so, I think the progress that I've made on these properties is pretty good. I showed you the other ones that I got the stuff done on, but now when I went to court, I was told I did nothing. But I've spent thirty thousand dollars this year on these properties and I've got all, and we can prove it. I think I even, I've showed the city attorney all the money we spent. But the harassment just doesn't stop. And I don't think, driving by my properties and looking at, and there's a lot I didn't show you, but I own twenty properties, but only two didn't get hit. So, eighteen out of twenty of my properties were hit. And I do deliveries in this town and have for twenty years, I see these homes. Now, I don't turn people in. I don't, I'm not going to turn landlords in. That's probably their job to go find the houses. But when I get up to houses and I go, "Why wasn't this turned in? Cracks in the floors and windows that are all busted?" And I get in trouble for a house that looks like, I get in trouble for this home? For my windows? When everybody has screens and there's, you know, every now and again, you got a window, you got to put a stick in. That's just, I don't know. They'll work now, but I had to spend seven months working on them to get them to go up. It was four hundred dollars to replace those big windows apiece. I didn't have the money at the time and it was winter. But I don't know. It's frustrating. I guess what I'm asking for is, is if I have grievances, is there somebody that I can go to that will take them and take them seriously?
Yeah, I wrote that down. I think that's a really good point that you bring up. And I know that the Housing Commission has a subcommittee working on some other ideas for kind of addressing outside of this program that's...
Well, that big house on Sherman, I get sentenced on that on the twenty-eighth. Now, the work is not that great.
And I think, are you working with John and Paul on these?
He's been, had multiple conversations with Paul and I think, but I'm not sure that's satisfactory, but you know, yeah.
No, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I think just to say we've had that, those conversations trying to...
Before the municipal court, we'll stay right there.
Yeah, and I think long-term, we are, we are going to be looking at a different way of handling things, hopefully.
Right.
If we can get consensus on the council. But for now, I would encourage you to continue working with Paul on longer timeframes as needed. It's clear that you're putting in the work and money.
And that's another thing. Because Channel Twelve, they had me on there on Channel Twelve on January the twenty-second. And I'm going to quote what Trent Maxwell said and he's saying right here that, "The city says before deferring a case to court, it tries to work with the owners to give them time they need as long as they show progress." But I guess I don't show any progress. So, that's why I was taken to court. And I've been, I've been in court nine times.
Well, I'm sorry that was your experience, but I'm saying from here, we need to be working with no chip or not.
He also says after thirty days, after the thirty days, they go months and months and years as long as they show progress. And I've showed a lot of progress and I didn't get this, I didn't get this. I got one month and then straight to court.
Yeah.
On everything, on every one of these. One month and straight to court.
I appreciate your feedback on that. If that's happening, I don't think it should be, but let's continue to work with it.
Let's, I mean, the issue before the council is the ordinance repeal.
Yes.
And Trent may have some comments, but again, as I said, there's always two sides to every story and I think it's appropriate that we have those conversations, work through them. This isn't the appropriate place to do those kinds of things. So, Trent, did you have some things you want to say? Trent, did you want to say something?
If someone want to hear the other side.
And again, I don't, I think we just move on with the item before the council and go forward.
Yeah. Again, Mitch, thanks for taking the time to give comments and for the investment you're making. Are there others who'd like to speak on this item?
I'd just like to speak again briefly if you weren't here earlier. My name's Alicia Garcia. I'm just a normal citizen. I do want to thank landlords who are working on their properties. It's really appreciated as a tenant that you guys are investing your money into these properties because, you know, as somebody that's lived here for four years and hasn't had a decent landlord until three weeks ago, it's very, very appreciated. It's frustrating to call in here on deaf ears and send messages and emails and get no responses, send pictures and everything of what's going on in the houses and nothing gets done. I have to say that in the past, I did have delayed responses from code enforcement and I am thankful for how they are stepping up. But I have to say that on a case-by-case basis, you know, I, it seems to, I hear a lot because I do work with a few landlords at Collins Bus Corporation where I work. And some of them were actually looking into renting out properties, but they were concerned with what you guys are going through. And I, it's like, it seems a bit of an understanding that like these larger companies are the ones that are like the issue. That's what I see. You know, the people that have hundreds of properties are the ones that I've ran into problems with. The people with twenty, ten, fifteen properties, they're right on it. They're on top of things. They want to make sure that they keep good tenants and that they're providing and for their services that they offer. So, I think that that's the major issue from a citizen's standpoint is that the larger companies are the ones that are the major issue going on in this town. And again, I want to applaud you all for just being awesome and trying to work through what, what the world throws at you. So, appreciate you all and thank you again for listening to me.
Thank you.
You have a great afternoon.
My name's Michael Jackson. I live at 3805 Culver Drive here in Hutchinson, Kansas. I was born in Hutchinson. I was raised in Hutchinson. I went to Hutchinson schools. I've owned and operated a business in Hutchinson, a fourth generation. At the time, we invested, I sold the business ten years ago, so with that money, I reinvested it in rental property. But due to over-regulations, we have decided to go a different direction. Inspectors and many inspections of many responsible property owners dwellings has frequently resulted in arbitrary orders to make thousands of dollars worth of untenable improvements to even the most well-maintained properties. The original intent may have been to improve dreadful housing stock, but the true consequences have been the chasing out of town responsible property owners. I would like to ask the ladies and gentlemen of the City Council a question. Do you think it's right, proper, or even constitutional, remember you took an oath of office, to jail or threaten to do so responsible property owners for minor cosmetic issues? I urge you today to, number one, delete the current rental inspection registration program and number two, decriminalize citations stemming from International Property Maintenance Code for all property owners. Thank you.
Have a broken leg, so I'm getting over it. I'm Alita Lett. I live on 3101 Mission Drive. I'd just like for you to take a look around. All of the landlords are mostly older people. I don't think they're criminals. I don't think they're anything but trying to make a living. I think they've worked hard all of their life to have what they have and to sustain that, including myself. I've sold real estate for thirty years. I've had great investors that have bought from me. I want you to know that every single one are either selling their properties because of this. The people from McPherson, Kansas are no longer purchasing here. I have several doctors right here in town that I manage their properties for and do a great job as far as keeping their properties up. Now, they're calling me and saying, "Will you sell to me in Derby, Kansas? Will you sell to me in McPherson?" We've got to stop what's going on. It's just not doing any benefit. I would love to see all of these people, all of you people, get along and work it out. It's now become, you're going to win and we're going to win. I've come to many of these meetings and kept my mouth shut mainly because I'm seventy years old. I want to be under the radar. I don't want to be picked on. I want to do the right thing and I want every one of you to do the right thing.
Julie Case, I live at 2416 Colorado. Along with Alita, I've been doing real estate and property management for twenty years in town. I manage fifteen properties at least here in Hutchinson and probably twenty in McPherson. That's my job and what you guys are doing are taking away my job here in Hutchinson anyway. I have a vested interest in six of those properties here in town. And am I going to look to buy anymore? No. Why would I invest here in Hutchinson? There is no reason to. I think that it should be repealed and I think it's insane to criminalize people for things they can't get done in thirty days.
Hello, I'm a citizen. My name's Teresa Luthcomb and I reside in Hutchinson, Kansas. I have her since 2008. I am concerned, I do appreciate the landlords and individuals taking on the responsibilities of rental properties. As a carpenter, I'm concerned that we are allowing grandfather code to be violated, not upheld, and providing safe environments for our community. It's important to all of us to see this community grow, but yet be safe. There are housing codes that need to be upheld by law. By my education, they were standard. As far as I know, they've not been changed. I have my certification, if you guys would like to see on this matter at all.
We trust your authority, yeah.
All right. I just hope that we can work together. I agree with business, but I also agree with the small landlords.
I think that's what our main goal is here.
Because this is a business. Rental is a business. There is no standards that keeps them from separate inspections from anybody. The HUD housing have to have their inspections. It's not right. Business gets inspected. Individuals don't.
No, the International Property Maintenance Codes covers everything that the rental inspection primarily does cover. Our main focus here is we want to change the tune, we want to change the culture, we want to change the communication. So, we're really going to work hard in the next six months to build a better relationship. But one of the things that they're bringing up is when you come down with a too hard of a hammer, you're causing a lot of these small investors to leave. And you know what you end up with? Like that lady out there talked about, you end up with the big companies coming in and grabbing all of these properties that the little investors are leaving behind and they don't improve them and they got the money to, but they, you end up, you really want to make sure you keep your market competitive with competitive investors. And when you come down too hard sometimes with a big hammer, you actually inadvertently hurt the community. And that's why we're not giving up on going after the bad guys. What we're doing is we're going to make sure that we're not also hurting the good guys in the process.
Right. We need to, we need to allow them time to work on these properties, to keep them here for us.
Yeah, exactly.
To provide those healthy environments for our community.
And we are, we're, we are definitely, that is, our main goal is to improve the housing stock, to improve rentals. We're just not going to do it by hurting the good guy in our search to get the bad guy, if that makes any sense. We're definitely, we have a lot to work on.
I really want to see the community grow and work together.
Yes, I want to see the community grow, yes.
And save our historical homes that we have. Keep the homes for the senior citizens to retire in if they get to a point they can't maintain their own and want to sell and rent and still be in a home and do so.
We've got a lot of work to do and I think that this step in repealing this today is a step closer. Sometimes you have to take a step back so that you can move even farther forward. And that's what we're doing here today.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Teresa. Are there others in the audience who would like to make some comments?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to call the question. We have a motion on the floor. I think we have discussed this ad infinitum. I think it's time for us to go ahead and vote.
Okay.
May I please speak?
No.
Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and call the roll.
The call for the questions takes precedence.
Call the roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Regretfully, yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Conresta Carvalho?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8A, consider cost share agreement with KDOT for Apple Lane reconstruction and bridge replacement.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I guess I'll wait for a bit. Okay.
Talk about Apple Lane.
Okay, back to Apple Lane, okay. All right. Last fall, the Kansas Department of Transportation initiated the cost share program. The purpose of this program was to leverage local and state money to address transportation needs in the state. After consulting with the City Council, the Engineering Department submitted an application for the reconstruction of Apple Lane. Apple Lane was selected, one reason because of the high maintenance the city incurred last year, about seventy thousand in materials and labor, and also the need to replace an existing timber bridges on that stretch of road. In November of last year, the city was notified that we did get that or we did receive funding from the cost share program. KDOT indicated there was about a hundred projects or a hundred applications and twenty-two of them were awarded, so we're very fortunate to get awarded some money for the reconstruction of Apple Lane. The preliminary construction estimate for the project is two million, one hundred thousand dollars with fifty percent of that being funded through the grant or one million, five, one million, fifty thousand dollars. The remaining portions will be funded through the city, which most likely will be bonded later this year. The funding from the Kansas Department of Transportation can only be used for construction costs and the city is responsible for design engineering, construction engineering, and if there's any other utility relocation, among a few other things. The project is currently under designed by the city Engineering Department and we're hoping to bid that later this year, probably April or May time period. So, with that, today, we have the formal agreement with KDOT for the cost share program and I would recommend that the City Council approve the cost share program agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation. So, any questions or comments going forward?
My only comment, Jeff, was I'd like to commend you for taking the initiative to making the application for these new funds that through our new governor, Kelly, she presented to all of us through KDOT. So, it opens the window for a project like this. My question is...
there so we can design the foundation of the road per se, once we take it up. So that's mainly what it is. We may also have some special-
Pretty minimal, Ben?
Yeah.
Yep, and, but, and we may have some costs when we go to do testing, so we call in an outside firm to do some of the testing of the materials.
Is there a bridge up?
There is a bridge, right now, a timber bridge that-
It's a timber bridge?
That really needs replaced, actually. So, so it's gonna be a box culvert going forward, so.
Okay.
Now, I would also comment that, just for the benefit of the new council members, that, excuse me, that this project we had slated for twenty-one, I believe, or twenty-two, yeah. So it was on our radar to do this project anyway. Um, in this way, we're getting half the cost paid for through the grant.
And I'm all for paying for infrastructure. That's, that's a core.
So are we.
So, if you don't mind, I motion to approve the cost share program agreement with KDOT for Apple Lane construction and bridge replacement project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Uh, sure, a second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris Staker Volo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item nine, report of city officials.
I'm gonna start at, you're in. Sarah, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. What about you, Steve?
Yes, I do have something.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We never heard from you about our timeline.
That's gonna come up under my report.
Okay, alright. Wanted to make sure we still had that coming. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. I'm gonna make my comments. Uh, my comment is that we do have a problem with Mr., your inspector, I've been getting calls about him, and I encouraged that young man to come up and talk. I'm glad he did come out. I have been at the city for a long, long time, and Mr. Deardoff didn't have us to be disrespectful of our citizens. I'm sure this young man does a good job, but I have been getting calls to people, doesn't, uh, they're not, uh, they don't want to come up here. So I don't know what the problem is, but we need to fix the way he handles things.
I think considering that's a city employee, we could probably discuss it in an executive session.
I, I would suggest that that is not a council discussion item. It's a personnel issue. If people have issues with an employer, they always have the opportunity to come to me. That's my responsibility. It's not something that's discussed here at a city council meeting.
I understand, but I still want to bring that up. I've been having calls on it, so.
And if I don't know the issue, it's, it's pretty hard to fix it.
I understand it, I understand it. But I wanted to make sure I let that know, uh, these people have some good, what they're saying, so, cause I've had calls when I have on my phone, so, anyway.
Do you have other items, Steve?
Other than that, uh, you guys do a phenomenal job, you three council member and Mr. Steve. Uh, me being a council member for the last couple of months, it's uh, I commend you guys to sit up here and have to make decisions. It's a hard, hard, hard thing to do. So I commend you on that, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. Um, well, before we move on down the road, I did want to remind you um of something that you brought up at the Fire Awards Dinner that I thought was a great idea, and this would be the time that you would um throw that out to the rest of the council.
Yes, yes, bring it up, Steve.
Okay, well, we was at the dinner, um, I was discussing that we have a junior council from probably fifteen to seventeen years old. We can't have eighteen-year-olds because we want them to vote on the stuff that's going on. I plan on making a junior council, which I'll get it together, and then we have one person from each district like we do, and they have to be from sixteen to seventeen, or maybe fifteen to seventeen. And we have a junior council, they'll always hear on my walks around my neighborhood that um, that they have nothing to do. There's nothing for, in Hutch for them to do. Well, let's make them have a voice in our, voice in the citizens, make them have a council and let them tell us what they want and what's going on. Now, they have to report to the council once, at least once a month, and see what's going on. They have no power, but we give them a little bit of power to say that they're what they want, and let them organize themselves. We might have, well, you might have future council people once they know how it works. And I'm very involved in, in young people, and I think that would be a great idea to get them interested. And the schools I went to talk to when I was uh on the bandwagon of getting elected, I went and talked to the schools and the young people, they thought it was a great idea. They were excited about it. So I plan to bring it back to you and let you know how I'm gonna do it and build this. Um, and I think we'll have a lot of interest, this way we can keep our young people back here, give them a little responsibility of, of, of having a junior council, and they would hopefully meet here and discuss what they need to do, and of course, they would be under us, and we would help them. And I think that's a great idea to keep them interested in Hutchinson, and for once, I could say if some young people come to me and say, ain't nothing to do, so you got a student council to go to, go to that council meeting and get the ideas to the big council. So that's what I want to do.
I think it's a great idea. I spoke briefly with Deardoff about it. He said that a lot of other communities have junior councils, and it might be something that you could um maybe work with Rebecca Kiesling on. I know that uh she's working on a civic engagement academy for adults, so uh this would be a great way to get, to get young people engaged in the political, kind of, local government process.
Actually, um, I don't really know how to start it. I guess, we do get a, a motion to build a city-
I don't know, I mean, I mean-
No, I think it's just something you need to do a little research on and see what's out there, see what other successes are.
Do others on the council.
And, and the issue is gonna be working through the, you know, schools and getting, you know, recommendations and-
Yeah.
And I would think probably, you know, start of the school year would be a good time to, you know, I, it's something we can work on with you if you're-
Okay, that'd be great. I'd like to see that done. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, John, do you have items?
No, I haven't seen this morning.
Okay, what about you, Nancy?
Nothing.
Okay, um, I, I just had a few things, if you'll humor me. Um, a lot of us had the opportunity to go to um the neighborhood meetings a few weeks ago, and want to commend the Hutch Rec and their work on um really educating citizens on how to become more engaged in the, in the political process and communicating to us um what they need. I'm really excited to see that program take off. Um, and there's so many, so many neighborhoods already, and, and um looking forward to seeing, seeing action in new neighborhoods. Also on Saturday, um, many of us had the opportunity to go to the Hutchinson Fire Department Awards Banquet, and it was just such a phenomenal event, really um inside peek at the amazing family that that organization is and the good work that they do. So I commend everyone who uh was recognized that evening and thank them for their service. Um, I, I also did want to mention that um we discussed a very contentious topic today, and it's one that's really torn this community apart. I was a big proponent of the rental program because I, I had that intent, um, like I think Michael Jackson is the one that mentioned the intent was to improve our housing stock, and I felt like that was a really good mechanism for doing so. Um, Richard Grieber brought up that it unfortunately um penalized people who were investing in their homes, and I think that that was an unfortunate consequence that maybe we didn't see. So I really look forward to working with the Housing Commission and um the community at large, the landlords, everyone, to come up with a solution that will ensure that we don't take a step back. Our public housing stock, or our housing stock as a community is a collective public good, and we have to protect it, we have to provide um a quality level that ensures people that are working in Hutchinson will also live here, um, that businesses looking to locate here, uh, will look at our housing and, and know that there's adequate quality housing for their workforce, um, and also that people living in homes have uh the health and safety minimum standards that they need. And, and aesthetics are important, too. So I just encourage us all to work together to make sure we don't take a step back. We've ta- we've spent ten years working on our housing stock, so with that, I'll turn it over to you.
I just got a couple things, just to follow up on that. You know, one of the, the missing voices in all these meetings has been the neighbors that live in these neighborhoods that are adjacent to some of these houses, and I get calls from them, you guys get calls from them, they wonder why the city hasn't followed up. So um, and if you read the notes of those neighborhood meetings, that was a topic that come up in at least two or three of them, that they were concerned about the condition of rental properties in their neighborhood. So uh, just, just a voice for those that aren't allowed or, or won't make their voice, knowing there are other voices on this issue.
When I went to the-
The other topic I had was uh just to let Ryan uh bring you up to date on the next uh process, and he'll take a couple minutes to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, yeah, you're, you're right, this, this has not been uh an easy topic, and it's uh something that has monopolized my time since uh I've been honored to take the position uh of Director of Planning and Development. But um it is an important issue, um, and, and housing in general um is a vitally important issue. And, and what I will say is that with the repeal of the rental uh registration that, that just happened, um, I, I think we can now kind of stop separating rental versus owner occupied, and I believe that's what the International Property Maintenance Code is really going to do, is it is all residential properties, it is all properties in the city, and we want to make sure that everyone is held accountable to that. When I took this position, I, I have always uh taken a look at everything that um through the lens of, of how can we improve our processes? How can we make things better? I've done that with zoning ordinance, I'm gonna continue that work um with that, uh bringing conversation to the Planning Commission about that here next week. But from the housing standpoint, um, we have begun to have that discussion, and we had a, a, a group of housing commissioners um that are also dedicated to, to trying to find a solution on this. And uh we began that process last Friday, had a, about an hour-long meeting, um, and really began to try to define the problem. And what we realized is that there's a missing voice at the table, and that is you guys up here on council. Um, and what was um asked, uh, recommended was that we have a joint meeting with members of the council and the members of this subcommittee, um, really to define the problem. Because I think what we've heard today, um, we've heard a common thread today, and that is perception versus reality. There is a lot of perception out there, um, on, and, and, and there are many sides to these stories. And so for us to sit in a room, or for this group to sit in a room in a vacuum and try to come up with these ideas, um, I think does a great disservice to this. And um we have members of this council um who have a wide and diverse set of opinions and ideas, and, and we really want you all to be there to help define this problem so that we can kind of move forward um and, and, and try to get this right the first time. I saw with the rental licensing, um, what a lack of communication and what um kind of trying to hit a moving target can do, um, and we want to try to avoid that. So uh with that, um, I will be reaching out to, uh, probably through John, um, to try to find some times that work for everybody and for us to have a joint meeting.
I guess special study session.
Yeah, have a study session at some point in time. I'm not sure what, how, where, when, or how we want to do that timing, but we could throw out some dates.
I think the sooner the better.
Yep, I, I think so, too. I think we've, we've, we had a very good discussion and, and we have some great ideas, but we want, um, we want to make sure we're defining this problem correctly.
I appreciate that.
Maybe we could do it later in the afternoon of the day? That works for Steve better.
Yeah, that's, that'd be great, if that works.
Later in the afternoon of the day, or?
So we'll, we'll look at, we'll try to get everyone's schedule and try to find some time that works and, and get that done hopefully in the next week or so.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. The only other item I had is a request for an executive session for purposes of land acquisition. Is that the appropriate language? And for, for no more than fifteen minutes.
I would move to recess into executive session pursuant to the preliminary discussion relating to acquisition of real property, exception KS A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen uh B six. In order to discuss a possible purchase of real estate, uh, the open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at?
Twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen.
And would add that uh in attendance would be the council, city manager, city attorney, and uh city engineer, director of engineering.
All right, second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris Staker Volo?
Yes.